I'd like to call to order this Bloomington Common Council Special Session and Committee of the Hall for Wednesday, the 25th of September, 2019. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Ruff?
Here.
Pete Monmouth Smith?
Yes.
Granger?
President.
Rallo?
Here.
Boland?
Here.
Sims?
Here.
Sterbaum?
Here.
Samberg?
Here.
Thank you.
All right, before we begin, well, our attorney had an announcement, but I see he's out in the hallway, so we'll wait on that. So this is our agenda this evening. If you'd like a copy of the agenda, you may find them beside the clerk. We will have approval of minutes for the 14th of August, 2019, regular session. We'll then go to one item for legislation for second reading and resolutions, and that is Resolution 1914. Resolution proposing an ordinance modifying local income tax allocations in Monroe County and casting 58 votes in favor of the ordinance regarding adjusting the allocations between the Public Safety Answering Point, PSAP, and general public safety purposes tax rates without changing other allocations or the total expenditure tax rate. The Public Safety Local Income Tax Committee, the PSL Committee of the Monroe County Local Income Tax Council, had a committee recommendation of August 1st, 2019, of due past 7:00. Then we'll introduce legislation for first reading. We have six items that are budgetary. Appropriation Ordinance 1905, an ordinance for appropriations and tax rates establishing 2020 civil city budget for the city of Bloomington. Second item is Appropriation Ordinance 1906, an ordinance adopting a budget for the operation, maintenance, debt service, and capital improvements for the water and wastewater utility departments of the city of Bloomington, Indiana, for the year 2020. Third item is Appropriation Ordinance 1907, appropriations and tax rates for Bloomington Transportation Corporations for 2020. Number four is Ordinance 1920, an ordinance fixing the salaries of officers of the police and fire departments for the city of Bloomington, Indiana, for the year 2020. Item five, Ordinance 1921, an ordinance fixing the salaries of appointed officers, non-union and ASME employees for all the departments of the city of Bloomington and Monroe County, Indiana, for the year 2020. Last item, number six, is Ordinance 1922, to fix the salaries of all elected city officials for the city of Bloomington for the year 2020. We will review our council schedule before we adjourn, and then we will reconvene as a committee of the hall, and we will hear each one of those budget items at our committee meeting chaired by Councilmember Jim Sims. So with that, yes, Council Attorney Sherman, did you have an announcement?
Yes. We do have sign language interpreters here. It's Sandy Givens?
Grissom.
Grissom, and Kathy Vannett. Okay. They're here to cover our special session tonight. They will not be covering the committee of the hall, so you'll see them at one point leaving, and that's under an agreement we have with them. So thank you.
Thank you for that announcement. We'll move now to approval of minutes. Anyone like to make the motion?
I move approval of the minutes for 14 August, 2019.
Second.
Any additions or corrections to those minutes? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Those minutes are adopted. We'll now go to legislation for second reading and resolutions.
Mr. Chair, I move that Resolution 1914 be introduced and read by title and synopsis only.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that Resolution 1914 be introduced and read by the clerk by title and synopsis only. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Will the clerk please read?
Yes. Resolution 1914, a resolution proposing an ordinance modifying local income tax allocations in Monroe County and casting 58 votes in favor of the ordinance regarding adjusting the allocations between the Public Safety Answering Point, PSAP, and general public safety purposes tax rates without changing other allocations or the total expenditure tax rate. Your committee recommendation is due past 7:00. The synopsis is as follows. Resolution 1914 proposes an ordinance to the Monroe County Local Income Tax Council that would modify the allocation of tax revenues between two components of the local income tax expenditure tax rate. This reallocation will affect the Public Safety Answering Point and general public safety rates authorized under Indiana Code 63.668 without changing other components of the expenditure rate or the expenditure rate overall. With adoption of the ordinance, the tax rate for the PSAP would decrease to .0654%, representing 26.15% of the total, and the tax rate for public safety would increase to .1846%, representing 73.85% of the total. The reallocation follows the recommendation of the Public Safety Local Income Tax Committee of the County Income Tax Council and would go into effect on January 1st, 2020.
Thank you, Clerk Bolton.
Mr. President, I move that Resolution 1914 be adopted.
Second.
Thank you. Mr. Sherman, will you be presenting? Who will be presenting this evening? Oh, Councilmember Pete Monmouth Smith, thank you.
Yes, thank you. It may seem to you that you've just seen this recently, but what we did a few weeks ago was allocating funds to the fire departments and emergency service providers outside the city limits. Now we are coming back to you to ask that you approve a reallocation between funding PSAP and funding general purpose public safety. PSAP is the Public Safety Answering Point, that's our central dispatch, and this year their budget request to the Public Safety Local Income Tax Committee was lower than last year, considerably lower. And so we are, our committee decided to change the portion of the Public Safety Local Income Tax that went to PSAP to be a lower percentage, and thus we were able to increase the percentage that went to the general purpose public safety. So that's the, the light green bar is the PSAP, the central dispatch budget, and the orange bar is the general purpose public safety portion, and they add up to .25%, which is what people pay on their income for public safety. So this is just saying, last year we did .0916% of the .25% was for PSAP. And this year, due to their decreased needs, their decreased request, that percentage is down to .065%. And the remaining then goes to the general purpose public safety. And just to remind you, what we did a few weeks ago with awarding funds to qualified service providers who apply, that is included in that orange part, it's the first line. So the 389,461 is what we had agreed to provide to the qualified service providers that offer emergency services outside the city of Bloomington. So I'm happy to answer any questions if there are any.
Thank you. Are there questions from council? No questions. We'll go to the public. The public would like to comment on Resolution 1914. You have your opportunity. Seeing no public, back to council for a comment or a recommendation. Call the question?
Second.
Okay, the question's been called and seconded on Resolution 1914. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Ruff?
Yes.
Pete Monmouth Smith?
Yes.
Granger?
Yes.
Rallo?
Yes.
Boland?
Yes.
Sims?
Yes.
Sterbaum?
Yes.
Samberg?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Resolution 1914 is adopted 8:0. Moving on to legislation for first reading.
Mr. President, I move that Appropriation Ordinance 1905 be introduced and read by title and synopsis only.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that Appropriation Ordinance 1905 be introduced and read by the clerk by titles and synopsis only. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Will the clerk please, please read?
Appropriation Ordinance 1905, an ordinance for appropriations and tax rates establishing 2020 civil city budget for the city of Bloomington. There's no synopsis.
All right. Thank you.
Mr. President, I move that Appropriation Ordinance 1906 be introduced and read by title and synopsis only.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that Appropriation Ordinance 1906 be introduced and read by the clerk by title and synopsis only. All of those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Will the clerk please read?
Appropriation Ordinance 1906, an ordinance adopting a budget for the operation, maintenance, debt service, and capital improvements for the water and wastewater utility departments of the city of Bloomington, Indiana, for the year 2020. The synopsis is as follows. This ordinance approved by the Utility Service Board in August of 2019 sets the water and wastewater budgets for 2020.
Thank you.
Mr. President, I move that Appropriation Ordinance 1907 be introduced and read by title and synopsis only.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that Appropriation Ordinance 1907 be introduced and read by the clerk by title and synopsis only. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Will the clerk please read?
Appropriation Ordinance 1907, appropriations and tax rates for Bloomington Transportation Corporation for 2020.
Thank you.
Mr. President, I move that Ordinance 1920 be introduced and read by title and synopsis only.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that Ordinance 1920 be introduced and read by the clerk by title and synopsis only. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Will the clerk please read?
Ordinance 1920, an ordinance fixing the salaries of officers of the police and fire departments for the city of Bloomington, Indiana, for the year 2020. Synopsis is as follows. This ordinance sets the maximum salary rates for all sworn fire and police personnel for the year 2020 in accordance with council-approved collective bargaining agreements.
Thank you.
Mr. President, I move that Ordinance 1921 be introduced and read by title and synopsis only.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that Ordinance 1921 be introduced and read by the clerk by title and synopsis only. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Will the clerk please read?
Ordinance 1921, an ordinance fixing the salaries of appointed officers, non-union and ASME employees for all the departments of the city of Bloomington, Monroe County, Indiana, for the year 2020. The synopsis is as follows. This ordinance sets the maximum 2020 salary for all appointed officers, non-union and ASME employees for all the departments of the city of Bloomington, Indiana.
Thank you.
Mr. President, I move that Ordinance 1922 be introduced and read by title and synopsis only.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that Ordinance 1922 be introduced and read by the clerk by title and synopsis only. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Will the clerk please read?
Ordinance 1922, to fix the salaries of all elected city officials for the city of Bloomington for the year 2020. The synopsis is as follows. This ordinance sets the maximum 2020 salary rate for all elected city officials for the city of Bloomington.
Thank you. Mr. Sherman, shall we review council's schedule?
Yes. A reminder that we have a special council work session this Friday at noon. It's in the McCloskey Room. We have just received the UDO from the Plan Commission today, and Friday is a chance for you to talk about how you want to handle this. What's your schedule? What process do you want to follow? And the UDO should go out in the packet this Friday for what you have set up as a regular session next week. It will be introduced next week, and at the time of introduction, I anticipate you'll entertain a motion to schedule what would amount to your first hearing on the UDO at least two weeks after that date. So that's one thing that's happening. So could I get a sense of how many of you might be able to come on Friday? I've heard from some others who are otherwise committed, so, okay, good. The second is, I think, an announcement. It is, it doesn't require a motion because Council President Rallo is working with the President of the County Council on scheduling what will be a joint city council, county council, and executive branch session next Wednesday. That's October 2nd, starting at 5:30, and at this point, running till maybe 7:15, and followed by your regular session on 7:30. So the closing time's not quite known at this point, but that's the outline for next Wednesday. So just making you aware that, anticipate coming early and joining your compatriots from the county and upstairs for another joint session on the Convention Center. Thank you.
Very good. Any questions regarding your schedule? Where do we have that reserved? Is it this room?
It'll be in the, right here.
Yes. All right, very good. Do we have a motion for adjournment?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor of adjourn?
Aye.
We are adjourned, and we will reconvene in a moment.
Seeing that we have a quorum, we're calling this evening's Committee of the Hall meeting to order for September 25th, Committee of the Hall meeting. Before we get into the agenda, the mayor has requested to make brief statements introducing budgetary items.
Thank you very much. Welcome to everybody here, and thank you, council members, for an opportunity to speak briefly again about the proposed 2020 budget in light of our presentation last month and discussions and presentations, questions we've had since then. We appreciate your attention, and we ask for your support for the 2020 budget in front of you. I do have to just make a very brief aside about extraordinary political times, given this is a political body that we are facing. Since November 8th, 2016, we've been extraordinary political times. Yesterday was a very notable day. Our country's first 180 years saw one impeachment vote proceed, and no conviction. In the last 45 years, we've had a president resign before impeachment, we've had another president impeached, and we have a third impeachment inquiry underway. I do hope DC will restore the rule of law, the dignity and patriotism that we look for out of our Capitol. We must continue to work together amid these, I believe, extraordinary challenges at our federal level to do what's right for our community and our country, too, and I just want to note that, our obligation and opportunity to do that. I'm not going to repeat last month's budget comments, just thank you for collaborating and developing another budget that I believe reflects the goals of our community and respects the realities, both financial and practical, that set guardrails for our city government. Briefly, you know, for the 15 departments in the administration with about 850 employees, the total operating budget of about $170 million reflects our investments to serve and support 85,000 residents, 2 million annual visitors, and to enhance and protect over $1 billion worth of assets with a balanced budget. We keep our general fund reserves at 30% or more of annual operating expenses, good stewardship reflected in our excellent and improved city bond rating of AA. I will note that only 10 jurisdictions in the state of any kind, town, city, county, have a bond rating that is higher than that. It's also worth noting, just briefly, some comparisons with our peers in the state that we, oop, this, you've seen this chart before, but just to remember, this is a list of the property tax rates paid by the 20 largest cities in the state of Indiana. You can see Bloomington is number 16 in terms of, on that list of 1 to 20, in terms of the tax rates that we pay, residents pay here. And I'll also note, if you see the next chart of local income tax rates, this again lists the 21 largest cities, including Indianapolis, local income tax rates comparing all 21 of the largest cities, and we are number 15. I note that just to reflect that we continue to be a fiscally responsible city. The budget continues our strong investments in our new city employees, increased training, fair living wages for all with 12 new positions. We embrace transparency, including a citywide performance report that will be released next week, and our ongoing emphasis on accountability and efficiency is evident. The budget reflects key priorities we discussed last month. I won't go into any details, including major investments in economic health, our quality of life, community justice, affordable housing, public safety. I will share just a few more detailed thoughts about two particular priorities that have been matters of some recent discussion, our police department and our efforts regarding climate change. First, as to police. We've been discussing issues on a couple of different dimensions. One relates to ongoing contract negotiations with the police union and appropriate levels of compensation, benefits, conditions, et cetera, for the coming several years. A second is with regard to the overall investment in police services, including, for example, the number of badged officers in relation to demands and population growth. As to the first issue, I just want to comment, we conducted a salary study done regarding all of our employees, which has informed our approach in these negotiations, as well as our treatment of all other employees. We've been, in an 18-month negotiation, there have been 16 offers and counteroffers back and forth during that period of time, ongoing with a mediator. Recently, actually, we were within about a five-figure dollar amount in regard difference, a five-figure dollar amount difference for a large multimillion, multi-year contract. Our ongoing negotiations reflect our deep respect for and commitment to fair compensation and conditions, and we do expect discussions to continue. I just want to report that to you. As to the second police issue, let me say directly, our administration has been and is fully committed to investing in public safety and our police department in very substantial ways. As you've heard me describe before, in the last four years, four budgets, including the proposed budget, we have added five new positions for badged officers and also freed up three other officers by replacing their work with other non-badged employees, for a total of eight badged officers available newly for services. We've also added new help with a social worker, two neighborhood resource specialists, and an after-hours ambassador. I do want to just show a graph showing the budget history of the last six years, the five budgets, four budgets that I have proposed and the two before that, showing the investment in the police department, including dispatch. You can see that that graph shows a very substantial, about 37% growth over seven years, over five years, I'm sorry, including a steady new investment. This is the operating budget, does not include lit capital investments, which are another about $6 million. That reflects a major investment in our police and dispatch. One, I will note, one aspect of this, there was about a under $1 million increase that reflects incorporating the county employees into our system in 2017, but even if you pull that out, it's a 30% growth rate or so. So I just wanted you to see our collective increasing operating investment in the police department. We've also, if you, I know we've talked about officers per 1,000. I just want to note, if that's used as a touchstone, it's relevant. I don't think it should drive all of our understandings, but if you include the IU police force, which provides direct services to the 85, some of the 85,000 people, we are right at the national average in terms of police, police per 1,000. You'll also remember that the first time ever, we've had a new national accreditation of our police department after a rigorous third-party outside review of performance and procedures, their training, making our police department one of the top handful of Indiana departments to do that. And perhaps most important, as we're looking at the police department, let me show one more slide about crime statistics in our city. These are based on the uniform crime reports done at the national level. These, too, are not the only touchstone, but I think it's important to note, in 2018, we actually have had the lowest overall Part I crime reports in the last 10 years in our city. That is a good thing. Those numbers can move around, but that is an important, steady service, and I'm very, very proud of that activity of our police force, including Chief DeKoff, who I believe in their training and performance are unsurpassed in the state of Indiana. I appreciate your continued support for this outstanding department and all of our officers in the 2020 budget. Now let me talk just a moment about climate action. I know you have a lot to do tonight. We all face an enormous challenge and opportunity in front of us as a community, as well as our country and our planet. We have to get this right, which is a society and culture we certainly have not been doing. As we know, there is no Planet B. I believe, and I believe we all agree, on the existential importance of addressing this issue locally, regionally, and beyond. This evening, I just want to give a very brief look at where we are now as a community, and some, including some of the progress we've made recently, and some look ahead. Let me state for the record that I agree wholeheartedly with the chants that rang through City Hall last week when hundreds of our residents, including many young people and students, joined the climate strike. The chant of "not enough" is absolutely correct. None of us has done enough. We have a great deal to do ahead of us. And I know that there may be some different views about how city government itself ought to be restructured or not in connection with this issue. There may be different opinions about how best to achieve very important results. That is my talisman, doing what works to get results. We cannot and we will not stop as additional efforts are needed. One important area of effort is political, speaking up and speaking out about this issue. As your mayor, I do that often, as do all of you. As a city government, we have joined important groups to build momentum toward change beyond our own community, including climate mayors, including the Electric Vehicle Purchasing Collaborative, Mayors for Solar Energy, "We Are Still In," referencing climate agreements, and the Global Covenant of Mayors for Climate and Energy. Now locally, the next slide, we have organized and activated our efforts with our first-ever sustainability action plan, led by city government, adopted in October 2018, just a little less than a year ago, after months of development and hundreds of participants. This plan outlines eight areas of focus. I'm certainly not going to go in the scores of particular goals already identified, but let me just mention a few so that you know them in case they're not front of mind. This plan calls for an 11% reduction in community-wide greenhouse gases by 2023, based on the 2016 baseline of 1.3 million tons. It also calls for a 12% reduction in city operations with greenhouse gas reductions within four years, 2023. It calls for a 20% reduction in community-wide building energy use, again, by 2023, in four years, from a 2016 baseline of 9.4 million BTUs. It calls for a 20% reduction in per capita water usage by 2023, again, four years, from a 96 gallons per day in 2016. And just as one other example, a 60% single occupancy vehicle commuting rate is called for in this plan, reducing from 63% in 2016, that by 2022. These are all big lifts requiring collaborations community-wide. Of those eight, I'm just going to give very briefly some examples of what is underway. This is all built in and incorporated into the plan, but the first is just about water. If we click to that, the major green infrastructure investments of $4 million that are part of City Bloomington Utilities over 10 years, the Lake Monroe Grant, which is working with our regional partners on protecting that lake, smart water meters, a major investment to increase conservation and lower our carbon footprint. In the next slide, just to give another example, within the report, ecosystem health, one of the eight categories, you may not have seen, it didn't get much coverage. Our Tree Report last week reported that city trees increased 56% in the last 12 years to 19,000. Our urban canopy of 38%. Overall community coverage is leading Indiana cities. Of course, you know about Switchyard Park, examples of more acreage of public space and the daylighting of the creek. Just a couple other examples in energy, you're very aware of solar, our 5X, five-time increase in the city generation of solar in the last two years. Also, a good fact to remember, Bloomington, with 3% of Indiana's population, has 10% of its community-based solar, and thanks to our friends at Siren and others. The building in which we sit has now designated lead gold. Lastly, just on transportation, again, you know much of this, seven new miles of side pass and trails planned and funded, adding to the 29 miles we have, the second electric bus being purchased this year, and as you know, the citywide transportation demand management plan underway. Lastly, I'll just note in the connection with this plan, there are a number of important projects which will be coming up. You're aware of the Waste-to-Energy Task Force, which will be looking at major ways we can convert our waste into energy, Climate Vulnerability Assessment and Action Plan, beginning this year, to be reported next year with an intensive review- beginning this year, to be reported next year with an intensive review, again, part of the Sustainability Plan, a greenhouse gas emissions inventory, which we do every two years and report, Carbon Disclosure Project, and Lead for Cities Communities are both national benchmarks that we are part of to measure that. And finally, a sustainability dashboard to report on how we're doing. This is a major list of actions and planned activities, and the Sustainability Action Plan is our guidebook for continued efforts. We have established an internal working group inside city government, which I lead personally, which includes eight department heads that will coordinate and oversee our actions with this plan to address climate change. I am proud that Bloomington was just recognized among all the municipalities of the state to win this year's statewide greening government award for Indiana, based on what we've been doing. But we're only just getting started on enormous efforts ahead, and we look forward to meeting that challenge head-on with you as a community together. Let me close by just thanking you, the council, for your close attention to this budget as always, and for public comments as well. I believe this is a very good budget for our community, again, reflecting our goals and respecting our realities. No doubt, some parts of this whole will appeal to some and not to others. Each of us may desire a change in this or that particular, but as our community-wide budget, I urge you to embrace this whole. Thank you very much for your leadership and support. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Hamilton. Okay, folks, this evening, we have six items for discussion. Ordinance 1920, we've asked Ms. Caroline Shaw to be present. Ordinance 1921, and ordinance 1922, we've asked Ms. Shaw to be present for all of them. Appropriation ordinance 1905, we've asked Mr. Jeff Underwood, City Controller, to be present. Appropriation ordinance 1906, we've asked Mr. Vic Kelson, Director of Utilities Department, to be present. And lastly, appropriation ordinance 1907, we've asked Mr. Lou May, General Manager for Bloomington Transit, to be present. And we will start with ordinance 1920. This is an ordinance fixing the salaries of officers of the police and fire departments for the city of Bloomington, Indiana for the year 2020. The synopsis reads as follows. This ordinance sets the maximum salary rates for all sworn fire and police personnel for the year 2020 in accordance with council-approved collective bargaining agreements. Ms. Shaw, if you would.
Good evening, councilmembers. My name is Caroline Shaw. I'm the HR Director here at the city. As Councilmember Sim just stated, I will not repeat the ordinance 1920, what it outlines, but I will cover the highlights. Oh, I will also say, this ordinance includes unit compensation for longevity, education, certification, training, and other qualifications defined by and provided by respective collective bargaining agreements for both police and fire. And then I will highlight changes from the 2019 ordinance and a brief description of salaries. First, for the fire department, salaries for fire captains, chauffeurs, and first-class officers are listed according to the contract between the city of Bloomington and the Bloomington Metropolitan Firefighters Local 586. The 2020 rate for the officers covered under this contract is 2%. It's an increase of 2% in 2020. The logistics officer has been included in this ordinance rather than ordinance for civil city employees as a matter of housekeeping. The prevention logistics and inspection officers are all at the same maximum salary of $61,573 in 2020. And finally, all other fire personnel salaries reflect a 2% pay increase. Now I'll review the police contract changes, or police salary ordinance. Salaries for officer first class and senior police officers are set in accordance with the negotiations between the city and the Fraternal Order of Police Lodge 88. There's not a contract. Salaries for officer first class and senior police officers will maintain at their current salaries. The other salaries is listed, receive a 2% pay increase. And your approval of ordinance 1920 is requested. I'm happy to take questions at this time.
Okay, thank you. Hang on just a second. Okay, okay, thank you. Do any of my council members have questions? Councilmember Isabel P. Mon Smith.
Yes, I am concerned that there has been no agreement reached with the Fraternal Order of Police, and I wanted to inquire about some of the data that they have brought to our attention in comparing the base salary plus longevity pay of the Bloomington Police Department with other communities in Indiana. As we see, the base pay is $52,916. If we look at salaries, base salaries in other communities, especially communities that are approximately the same size as Bloomington, they are much higher. For example, Lafayette has a base pay of $63,962. And I know I discussed this previously with the administration, and I was told that you can't really go on base pay because there are many add-ons, but I see that this ordinance limits the add-ons to $4,800, and even if you added that, we would be very low compared to other cities. So I just wanted to get the administration's feedback on that and why our police officers are not making as much as parallel departments.
I will defer to our lead negotiator, Philippa Guthrie, our Corporation Counsel.
Thank you.
Thank you, Philippa Guthrie, Corporation Counsel. We are happy to talk to you about that, but we don't believe negotiating a contract in public is workable. It's just, there are too many complexities in how these contracts work, so we can meet with you another time. We are happy to meet with the police again. There have been, as the mayor mentioned, up to eight offers on each side exchanged. We got very close at one point, then we were very far away at other points, and we went through mediation. We are open to negotiating at any time, probably sooner rather than later, since we're getting into the holiday period. But, you know, we made the last offer, and it was put to a vote without a recommendation by the FOP, so that is what it is. And we can't make a new offer because we would be negotiating against ourselves. So that's where it stands. And if you'd like to meet with us and talk about, you know, issues, we'd be happy to do that.
So there's nothing, like, categorically you can say about, that I'm not understanding here when I compare salaries?
Well, yeah, there are things in contracts that are different. That's just the base salary. There are lots of other things provided in these contracts that add to the value.
I see.
Thank you. Councilmember Sandberg?
Yes, I don't know if this ordinance, if we're only talking about salaries right now or if we're talking about other conditions. I know in the mayor's initial report, he was talking about, you know, salaries and conditions for the BPD. And I have a question, it may not be appropriate here, about the whole accreditation process, and what, if anything, that may reflect on the conditions of the current force. And obviously, to get accredited, obviously, that's a good thing, but I want to know a little bit more about, does that process give us any indication about some of the things we're hearing? And I don't want this to turn into a quament, but we're hearing one thing from the officers, we're hearing another thing from the administration. I just want to know where we can get facts that we, as a council, can hang our hats on when we're making decisions, not so much about salaries, which of course, that is, you know, that's a bargaining situation that has to, you know, take place between their representatives and the administration, but the conditions is what my concern is about. So again, long way to ask this question, but could someone please walk me through what accreditation means and where we stand with that?
Good evening, Mike DeKoff, I'm the police chief. So the accreditation is through the Commission on Law Enforcement Accreditation. It is a national body that accredits police departments across the country. What they do is they take a look at each department's policies and procedures and how they operate, and they put those up to national standards. And that's basically what accreditation is, is a complete review of our policies and how we operate. And in that, in each policy, you have to prove that you are doing what your policy says, so there's things called proofs that are in that accreditation review when the assessors come and do that. It's a, it's a three-year process. It took us three years to get accredited. We get reaccredited, excuse me, every four years. And so every year, we update approximately a quarter of those policies to make sure that they are updated and they meet the national standards.
Okay. And those national standards, do they include any data or information that would indicate that we are perhaps understaffed by other comparative?
I'm not aware that they go into staffing levels. It's more on your written policies and how you operate.
Okay. I may have some other questions later.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Bowlin.
Yeah, the first question I have is sort of a technical one. I'm not sure that this is a question for you as it is for Mr. Underwood, but don't we need to know what the eventual salaries will be so that we can pass the budget? In other words, if you conclude the negotiations after the vote on the budget and the eventual thing requires an increase in the budget, how will you achieve that? Are you going to move money around, or are you going to come back to us for another appropriation?
There are two steps to that. The salary ordinance would be amended first, and then we would come back for an additional appropriation if needed. And as you know, we typically come to you at least three times a year to talk about the finances. We usually have at least two app ordinances, one in the spring and one in the fall, so that would give us the opportunities to amend that budget and add those funds to it.
So the other question I had about that was, Ms. Guthrie talked about the five-figure difference between the union and the administration, but that's not the same thing as a vote of the membership. In other words, while there may have been that close between the union negotiators and the administration negotiators, any eventual figure would have had to been proved by the membership. Isn't that correct?
Obviously, any contract would have to be agreed to by the union's negotiating team and the city. That would then go to a vote to the membership, and they would either vote it up or down. If they voted up, then the two steps that I talked about would happen.
So, but I mean, there was an actual vote of the membership, and they turned down the most recent offer. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. Those are my questions for the moment. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Rallo.
I wanted to pick up on a statement made by the mayor about the contribution of IU police to the community public safety efforts, and I suppose my question would be to Chief And my question is about, to what extent can they police the Bloomington area? What limitations do they operate under? In other words, can they operate off-campus and how far, and are they part of service calls and things like that?
Police jurisdiction, they have jurisdiction throughout the entire state, so they could operate anywhere in Monroe County, in the city. They tend to stay on campus and probably a couple of blocks radius around campus. We do not dispatch them. We will sometimes ask that they back us up and assist us, but they have their own calls and they have their own dispatch facility.
But they're aware of our dispatch? They're hearing calls in the community?
Both agencies monitor each other's radio traffic.
I see. And obviously, we extend our police force on campus if necessary.
If they would need that assistance, yes.
By request from that?
Yes.
Thank you.
Councilmember Sternberg.
Yes, Chief DeKoff. Could you speak to three items? The amount of overtime, police leaving for better pay, and the unfilled spots on the force. Why are these happening? Why are we having more overtime than before? Why are more police seeming to be leaving? And why can't we get new police?
Well, so let's start with overtime. We have more and more demands. We have more and more requests. If you'll remember, a couple of years ago, when we had a lot of issues with homeless people downtown, downtown businesses demanded that we have foot patrol, so there's a lot of overtime that deal with foot patrols downtown. Any type of specialty assignment, there's overtime, some of it we get reimbursed for. University sporting events, we get reimbursed for that. A lot of times, when there is a police officer sitting in this council chambers at your regular session meetings, more likely than not, they're on overtime. And so there's just a lot of things and a lot of requests that we get that overtime's the way we have to do that.
So isn't that more demand than supply?
Yes and no. Sometimes the staffing levels just aren't adequate to cover everything, and so it really just kind of depends. As far as people leaving, we keep a list of people who have left the department, and there's a variety of reasons why people leave. We have people that have put their 20 years in and retired. We have people that, you know, are here for a little while and want to move back closer to wherever they're from. We have people that leave and don't want to be in law enforcement anymore, and we have people that leave to take other law enforcement jobs because it's a better opportunity for them. We have always tended to be kind of a stepping stone agency. We're not big enough to have all of the specialties that a larger department has, and so if you get hired here, we have many officers that spend their entire career in patrol. Some people don't want to do that. Some people want other opportunities, like detectives or, you know, larger agencies have full-time tactical teams, they have full-time specialty units, and we don't do that. And so there's a variety of reasons why people leave. And then the last one was...
Yes, field spots.
So recruiting police officers today is much different than it has been over the last 10 years. You can just watch the news, you can read in the newspaper. People don't really want to be police officers anymore. There's a variety of reasons for that. You know, last year, we spent a great deal of time discussing the armored rescue vehicle, and that's taxing on people, and they don't, they just get tired of it. They don't feel like they have the support. And so it's hard, it's getting harder, not just for us, but for police departments across the country to recruit people. It's not just germane to Bloomington. I last fall attended a hiring and recruiting and retention seminar put on by the Police Executive Research Forum, and there were police agencies from all over the country that were talking about how they are experiencing the same problems that we are. It's hard to find people that want to be police officers. And again, some of those statistics that are, some of those instances that I mentioned why people have left, people don't want to remain in law enforcement. There's a lot of criticism, there's a lot of second guessing. That takes its toll on people. The economy's fairly good, so people can find other jobs. They don't necessarily have to have the security of a government job. And so there's just lots of reasons that go into that, and that affects more than just Bloomington.
Right. So follow-up, is overtime voluntary, or are there involuntary calls to overtime?
The only mandatory overtime that we issue yearly is Little 500, and we recently did it with the farmer's market.
Right. So you wouldn't really say we're at business as usual. I get the feeling we're at a point where we need to take some action, even if it's, even if everyone's having the same problem.
I think there are incidences that present themselves to us that are not normal, that we're used to dealing with. Farmer's markets, a good example, that required a lot of resources. So there are things that have happened and that will probably continue to happen that will tax our manpower issues.
So doing the same thing may not be the solution. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Granger.
Thank you. I'm going to go back to the...
I'm going to go back to the question about the negotiations and having to then come to council for additional appropriations. Where does the money come from next year? I mean, if it's not in our budget?
It would come out of cash balance.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Bowden.
Yeah, just follow-up on the question of jurisdiction. I was a few years ago, standing outside the Bluebird, and I saw four IUPD cars outside it. And I asked an officer what was happening. He said, "Well, one of our officers happened to be driving by," and a call came in, and they were the closest ones to it. They answered the call. I imagine that happens a lot more often than the reverse, where BPD are on campus and they happen to answer a call. So isn't it true that IUPD answers off-campus calls opportunistically at a much higher rate than the opposite happens? Isn't it reasonable to assume that IUPD has some, plays some non-zero measurable role in patrol?
IUPD backs us up more than we back them up. We do not go on campus very often to back them up.
Right. I mean, so is that figure not factored into the, I mean, I know that you sort of, you add the complement of IUPD patrol to BPD patrol to say that we're more comparable to other cities. But I mean, it does seem to me like they do provide a certain nominal but substantial amount of coverage.
So the university, yes, they monitor what we do, and they will assist. But again, we do not dispatch for them. And if they had their own issues, they're going to take care of their own issues, too.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Sandberg.
This will be a question for the administration. I'm not sure who from the administration, but, you know, we're, again, we're getting different kinds of information, you know, from the administration. We're hearing that Bloomington is not experiencing any crisis in officer retention, nor is Bloomington experiencing any unusual problem with recruitment. But then, on the other hand, we're hearing information that that is not necessarily the case. Would the administration be amenable to contracting with some sort of outside consulting to give us a better idea of what is accurate and how we make decisions about appropriate levels of staffing and what may be needed that's not in this year's budget? I mean, I don't know that the salary study gets us there when we're talking about staffing levels, and that's my major concern at this point.
I can say that the attrition rate is pretty much the same for most departments in the city. So there's no department that's a big outlier, including the police. I don't know that we can commit to a consultant study, but, you know, I suppose we can consider it down the road. I don't, it's kind of last minute in the middle of a budget proposal.
Right. And we may not be able to agree on anything for this year, but I mean, we're still faced with, we're getting different kinds of information from different, depending on where you're standing, that do we have a problem? Do we not have a problem? And I think many, well, I'm not going to get into a comment. I'm just, I am concerned about the proper information. Would think that maybe an outside consultant might be necessary at this point, and I would hope that would be something we could look into. Thank you.
Do we have any further questions from council? Councilmember Sturbaum.
Just one last question. Has this happened before, where we've got to budget and the contract has not been worked out? Is that an unusual occurrence, or is this business as usual?
I believe, since I've been back, this is the third time out of five budgets that that's happened.
Third time?
Yeah.
Thanks.
Thank you. Any further questions from council? Okay, seeing none, I have one. Just wondering, we've talked a lot about IUPD, and I don't know who answers this, and how they might impact. Has there been any such discussions with Sheriff's Department and/or Indiana State Police? Do they have any impact on backup assistance calls?
Again, they, all the agencies in Monroe County monitor each other's frequency, and there are occasions where they back us up. There's occasions where we back them up. So, I mean, the answer is yes, we do do that.
But that's broader stuff. That's not, that's not patrol. That's not farmer's market. That's not...
County and state jurisdictions tends to be further out than IUs. IUs is inside the city limits, and so it's just more natural that IU does it than anybody else. Usually, we probably back up the county more than they back us up.
Okay. Thank you. Councilmember Pete Mon Smith.
Yes, I have a question. I think it's probably for Ms. Shaw. Looking at the language in the ordinance itself, under fire in the additional pay, it says the maximum annual total for longevity, professional assignment certification, and education pay is $4,800. But for police, it exempts the longevity. So longevity pay is not included in the maximum $4,800. Is that, why is there that difference there? Is that just a matter of the past?
It's a matter of the contract.
Contract. So somebody who has been on the BPD for 20 years, every year of employment is $100, so they'd get $2,000 more dollars. So the maximum additional pay they could get is not $4,800, but $6,800. Is that right?
That sounds right, but I don't have the contract right in front of me. I'd be happy to confirm that for you and get back to you, though, on it.
Okay. That would still not put them at Lafayette's level, but anyway. Thank you.
Councilmember Rallo.
Yeah. Just to explore this a little bit further, maybe this is for Ms. Guthrie. And it has to do with negotiations. I think either you or the mayor said that the offer was made, it was rejected, and now the administration's in the position where you're not going to make a further offer without a request from union representatives to meet. Is that correct? So in other words, the city administration has concluded but is not averse to meeting again. You're simply waiting for another request from union representatives. Is that, how I read it?
Right. I mean, the party who makes the last offer can't then say, "We have another offer." We'd be negotiating our own offer. I mean, we're not even sure what the discussion was at the FOP and why they turned it down, so.
Okay. So would it be fair then to say that you're in a position where if a request was made, you would then go forward in good faith and hear what an additional request might consist of?
Absolutely. I think everybody wants to get this resolved.
Yeah. Okay. Thank you for that.
Any further questions from council? Seeing none, we now go to the public. If anyone has any public comments on ordinance 1920? 19-20?
Good evening. Paul Post, President of the Northern Order of Police Lodge 88. I had a written statement I was going to read.
I think there's a sign-in sheet up there.
There is, indeed.
Is there not? Or do we do that on...
I will sign in. I'm not going to read my prepared comment. I'm going to answer some of the questions that have come up from your questions, which I think were very good and well-received, and we appreciate hearing them. We also appreciate hearing from the mayor tonight that this is an important issue. We feel like we're running out of time in this year. We want to get a signed contract. That's why it's a very important issue to us right now. First, the question about IUPD and providing service off-campus. From a working point of view, the answer is yes. We do see IUPD. There are thousands of IU students who live off-campus, and we provide police service to them. There are thousands of IU students who live, or live off-campus and go to dinner, or go to a movie, or crash into each other off-campus. We provide that police service to them. Their parents come to town for Parents' Weekend. We provide police service to them. That's not provided by the police department. If it happens inside the city, it's going to be us. It's very common to have, say, a motor vehicle crash where neither party is from Bloomington, and we still provide that police service to them. We have to work that crash because it happened inside the city limit. The IU Police Department is there. They're a full-time police department. As the chief stated, they can answer a call anywhere in the city. If they are close to something, the opportunistic question that came up, sure, they do. They don't generally get dispatched to our calls, or calls specifically involving IU students. Like I said, there's thousands of them. They live all over our city. We provide the police service to them in those apartment complexes, or theaters, or where they eat out, all those things. Same kind of issue, Mr. Sims, you were talking about with the sheriff's office or state police. If they're near something, or if we do need help, we will request help from them. There are times where we run out of officers during a shift, and it says, you know, on the screen, there's no units available, and they'll call county or ISP for a crash or something like that. It happens. Ms. Sandberg, you were asking about the Kalia accreditation issues. One thing that I'm going to say there is that for feedback on that, I would recommend, like we told the mayor earlier this year, look at the end-of-the-year employee survey that was done under Kalia. There was a 2018 employee survey we took last November. A lot of the department took that survey. It was supposed to be anonymous. It was all done online through this portal. The mayor has seen it. There's been discussions about it. I think most of the membership who took the survey were very frank in their answers. You may find some of those questions answered there if you read those. Mr. Sturbaum asked about overtime voluntary versus mandatory. I can tell you that there is a Google Drive list of mandatory overtime. People get held over from shifts because we don't have coverage on the next shift, and they're told, they're ordered to work the next shift. That's mandatory overtime. It is not done in a very uniform manner. Certain shifts always get held over. Certain shifts, you just kind of make do. So while there is sort of a rule, it's not very uniform. So it's there. Mandatory overtime happens. Yes, most of the overtime is, you know, people signing up to work extra shifts, or IU football, or basketball traffic, or something like that. But it does exist. The other thing, Ms. Sandberg, we're talking about an outside contractor to study the staffing. We would have no issue with that. Again, it was kind of covered. I think it's too late for this contract negotiation. Those answers would have been good 18 months ago. When we started this and brought some of this forward, I think that would have been the time to maybe start that idea, and unfortunately, we're well past that now. If it happens going into the next, you know, three years of this contract that's left, it may be useful for the contract that will happen in 2022. So yes, we would support that. I think it would show that, you know, where we feel that there is a staffing issue, that the officers feel that they are, you know, constantly overworked and having to cover things. That's what I have. Like I said, I'm not going to read my prepared statement because I think there was a lot of good discussion that was going on here. I wanted to address some of those things. We're happy to answer other questions. I know we've talked to a few of you, but please let us know if we can answer questions.
Do you have any further public comments? Please approach your podium. I will remind you...
My name is Jake...
Before you get started, I just want to remind everyone that all your comments should be directed to the chair. So these comments are fine, but just direct them so we can keep flowing. Thank you.
My name is Jacob Woods. I am the night shift representative for the Bloomington Police Department Bargaining Unit. Spoken to you before on a couple of occasions now. First, I want to thank the council for providing us an opportunity and a platform to speak Again, just to echo some of Paul's sentiments, we do feel that there's a lot more issues at hand here than aren't being addressed appropriately, and that's why we continue to come forward and speak with you. And we greatly appreciate the questions you've had for us tonight, sorry for the administration in regards to this proposal moving forward. Thank you.
My name is Drew Bazan. I'm the second shift representative for BPD. I'd like to talk about the recurring retention argument that we have. Speaking with my fellow coworkers on second shift, it seems almost weekly that we hear about another agency having a significant raise, whether it be a neighboring city or county. And speaking with the second shift officers, it seems as though they're on kind of a standby right now, seeing what happens with this contract. I've heard firsthand of people saying, "There's nothing that keeps me in Bloomington." And I understand that that's a lot of, second shift is IU graduates. They are not from Bloomington. They have come here to this police department because they have been in the area for a couple of years. They have no ties to Bloomington other than this job, and as I said, they're on standby and waiting to see how this contract is going. I fear that if this contract does not suit them, or does not meet their criteria, that this retention issue may become worse, and we may have an exodus of a significant number of officers. Thank you.
Any further public comments on ordinance 19-20? Okay, seeing none. Go back to the council.
More questions or comments?
Questions or comments from the council? Councilmember Sandberg.
First of all, I want to make it clear that I do not think it is appropriate for this council to be involved in any way with the collective bargaining agreement. I feel very strongly, as someone who is very much pro-labor and pro-union, this is a due process that takes place between the BPD and their representatives and the administration. So again, I think that is a kind of a separate issue from some of the others that have been raised. And, you know, I think this is kind of an unprecedented time that we're in, where we have heard so much from the rank and file, from the BPD, from them coming forward and really expressing to us on a personal level, both through emails that we've received and in the various times they've addressed this body. And even before the BPD representatives came into these chambers and were sharing their concerns with us, I think many of us up here on this council have been questioning for a long time, do we have the adequate levels of officers to address some of the increasing stresses and strains that we've all had to deal with? And I think Chief DeKoff mentioned, one, we were dealing with the crisis on Kirkwood. We have an opioid crisis that is not, you know, unusual for other cities and national crises. We have, obviously, with a university in our midst, we have those added strains of the additional population that IU brings. And then, of course, the recent stresses with the farmer's market, and even before that. And I go back to the CERT vehicle, the Critical Incident Response Team vehicle, that caused such an emotional and such a concern in this community. I have had concerns about the morale and the well-being of our officers since that debate, and being concerned about, do we have the right mechanisms in place to make sure that our police force are well-trained, well-disciplined, and well-cared-for with respect to having time off, being well-rested, having time with family? I strongly believe in work-life balance. And so my issue, while salary is being negotiated by the appropriate mechanism, I am questioning the staffing levels and our ability to meet the needs of the officers, which we are, they're critical to our ability to deliver what the community needs with respect to responding to crime, responding to problems, where we need sworn, well-trained officers. And I highly respect our efforts to relieve some of these social tensions that I've referred to through additional social workers and specialty officers and the DROs, those downtown resource officers. Very proud of that. I think that's wonderful. But I want to make it clear, there is no substitute for having well-trained, well-cared-for police officers. And so I am strongly suggesting that if we can't come to an agreement between what we're being told by the administration and what we're hearing from the rank and file... we're being told by the administration and what we're hearing from the rank and file, I think it might be time for an outside consultant to take a look and give us some clear idea of where we are, where we stand, and what our needs are for that. I understand this is kind of late in the game. We're probably not going to be able to make too many significant changes at this point, but I will probably be passing tonight just in the hope that more can be done to kind of clarify some of these issues that are certainly still resting with me, given we don't seem to be at an impasse. And that tells me we still have some issues that we need to take a look at to make sure that we are doing the right thing by our community and by the very people who put their lives on the line to protect us and this community. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Allo.
I think this topic certainly has received a great deal of concern by members of the council and regarding the lack of contract. It seems that there was a lot of active negotiating, if there were 16 offers or counteroffers involved. It seems that the impasse, if it was as close as a five-digit figure, seems resolvable. The ball, it seems, is in the union's court since the administration has made an offer and a request for another meeting is up to the union, and I would encourage them to do that. And I'll repeat what I said since May, because I still believe this, that it would be well-served if we added officers such that we at least keep parity with population increase in the city, notwithstanding the figures showing crime dipping right now. But I just think that with reflection of the overtime, whether it's voluntary or involuntary, seems to me to speak toward more and more work to do that requires people working after hours. So I think that that's something that we should continue focusing on. And I'm aware of some details. I agree with Councilmember Sandberg that we're not in a position where we negotiate salaries at the council level. So I would leave it to the administration, and they seem to be willing now to accept a request in good faith to proceed. And so I hope that that happens, and I hope that it's resolved because we are very concerned about where this stands at this point. So I'll leave it at that. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Volin.
Yeah, we've discussed the idea before that if we added the sworn officer force of IUPD to BPD, we would be closer to comparable with other cities. And this is a problem in every college town where the university has its own force. I mean, my preference, and I've said it many times in this chamber, with that our friends from the state would not indulge in municipal functions. They shouldn't have their own police force any more than they have their own bus system. And we can see that this is an option that universities pick and choose from because they don't have their own fire department. They contract with us. I mean, think of the flexibility that we would have from a staffing standpoint if all of IUPD were rolled into one force. It would be much, I mean, the more people that were there, it'd be easier to schedule. You know, and I know universities that have no city near them that have all their own functions, but I certainly don't think that, I mean, that's sort of a problem of why universities locate in the middle of nowhere or what have you. One other thing that's come up to me, though, that's come to my thoughts, thinking about this, is even if we were, if the council had the authority to increase salaries, which we don't, by state law, we can only cut the budget, we can't increase it. The increase has to be initiated by the administration. Would, I am confused about the desire for more pay versus the desire for more staff because in my first term, when Mayor Cruzan was in his first term, their administration made a commitment to increasing staff by two a year until we got 16 more officers, and that happened by early this decade. And I don't, I can't quite tell, you know, what the balance is between these two sort of wishes. And I also think that that may be, that's not a part of the negotiations, only about salary at the union negotiation. But even now, I'm having trouble determining how important it is to add more officers as opposed to adding salary to all current officers. So, you know, I'm looking forward to learning more about this issue. I'd like to talk to both members of the administration and the police union to better understand it because even now, these things aren't clear. I do think that the union has made at least some case that we are falling behind, and I'm sensitive to that. I do think the administration has made some points that show that we're not as far behind as we might fear. So I can see why there's an impasse. But I'm not afraid to spend a little bit more money, and I don't think we should be. I just, I agree with my colleagues that it wouldn't even be right, even if we wanted to, to be involved with negotiations. But I certainly take the concerns of the rank and file of the force seriously, and I also am concerned about making sure that we don't overspend. So I wish I had better answers right now. I'm going to pass on this budget. Thank you.
Councilmember Pete Bonsmith.
Yes, I'd like to remind my colleagues that we are discussing ordinance 1920, which fixes the salaries of police and fire departments. It's not until appropriation ordinance 1905, setting the civil city budget, that we would be addressing the number of officers that would be funded in 2020. So as many of my colleagues said, you know, we're not on the negotiating team. We can't insert ourselves into that process. But it is curious to me that, you know, I talked to the administration about the figures that the FOP provided of the base pay in other cities, and they said it's not comparable. And what I'd really like to know, okay, somebody bring me the comparable numbers so we can really see if it's true that the Bloomington Police Department makes a lot less than comparable cities. So, I mean, that would take a lot of work. You'd have to look at the ordinances such as this one and see, you know, what officers can make in addition to base pay and such, but it seems to me that's what needs to be done at some point in the future so that we can really see whether the salary offer that the city is proposing is fair. I think that the question of whether we need more police or not, I will, you know, talk about that under appropriation ordinance 1905. That has many variables. I don't think that's a black-and-white issue either. But just, I did want to address one thing that the mayor said in his opening comments where he had the chart saying how much the investment of the city in public safety had increased, I think it was 37% the last five years. I wanted to point out that since the 2017 budget, we've had a new revenue source. So a vague part of that is because we now have a public safety local income tax. So I don't think the administration can really take credit for that other than having supported that tax. So despite that, I do think that everybody involved in this negotiation respects what police officers do. I have tremendous respect for people who put their jobs on the line every day, their lives on the line every day for us, and I think it's a very stressful job. And personally, if I need a police officer, I don't want one who is working two shifts and is overworked and doesn't get enough sleep the night before. You know, I want one who is well-rested and can dedicate their whole attention to the situation at hand. So I am concerned about the situation. I think what I can do as council member is very limited. I hope that the contract negotiations can be resolved soon. I think it is not a good way to do business to say, you know, we'll just do this appropriation or do this ordinance now and then worry about appropriating more money from reserves later. That doesn't seem like a very smart way to govern, but I know that nobody intended that starting out. So I guess that's all I have to say at this point. I'm very concerned about the situation with the salaries, but there's not a whole lot I can do at this point. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Turbaum.
Yeah, this would be a different night and a shorter meeting if the administration had come in and said, "We have settled this contract," and the police had come in and said, "We're happy with this contract, and we all go on to next ordinance and move along." But that isn't how it is, and that isn't what happened. And I get the impression this is not business as usual. We have new problems. We have homeless. We have drug issues. And when we are understaffed, we have issues that can't be addressed. There's no paperwork for things that don't happen, but there are issues that don't get resolved because we don't have enough people sometimes. So I don't think it's business as usual. I think we do have a morale problem, and I think it's dangerous to go three years ahead with a contract that doesn't address those, that doesn't create a positive response from the police force, that doesn't give incentive for people to say, "This is where I want to work. This is a good place to be. This is where I don't want to leave." You know, that's an outcome that's intangible in how we negotiate, not how much can we control this, how much can we keep it down, but can we listen and say, "These people, these workers, these police, these servants deserve to be treated fairly, and this should be settled. This shouldn't be coming to council out like this, and we shouldn't be hearing these issues. It should have been settled before it got here." So I'm going to pass, and I'm going to want to see this get settled, and I want to see a morale increase in the city, and I want to see, I want to see this fixed right, not play games with the future, gamble into the next three years with the wrong numbers, the wrong situation for our future. So thank you all for speaking to us, and let's get this fixed. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Allo has a brief question.
Just a brief question. Mr. Underwood, regarding the graph indicating the 37% increase over, I think it was five years, six years, something like that, in public safety, I understood that this did not include the LIT. Councilmember Pete Bonsmith stated it does. Could you clarify that?
It does include funding from the PSLIT.
It does include the LIT?
Yes.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Recommend you pass?
Second.
Thank you.
You start on your left or your right?
Starting on my left, please.
Pass.
Pass.
Yes. Pass?
Pass.
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 That's a 0, a 1, 0, 7.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda is ordinance 1921. We've asked Ms. Shaw, again, Director of Human Resources, to be present, and this ordinance is an ordinance fixing the salaries of appointed officers, non-union and AFSCME employees for all the departments of the city of Bloomington, Monroe County, Indiana for the year 2020. Ms. Shaw.
Ordinance 1921 sets 2020 pay grades and salary ranges for appointed officers, non-union, and AFSCME employees. Consistent with prior years, we intend a 2% increase in civil city salaries. Salary ranges associated with civil city pay grades have been adjusted in the ordinance to reflect the 2% increase. Labor trades and craft pay rates, which will increase to 2.25%, according to the collective of bargaining agreement between the city and AFSCME. In 2017, the administration in cooperation with the city council determined to increase the common law minimum rates, pay rates for the following, over the following years, or at least the living wage in 2020, which is set at 1321 next year. Section 2P provided AFSCME employees a contract ratification bonus at the end of 2019. Since this is a one-time bonus, this section has been removed from the ordinance. Longevity recognition and award amounts remain the same as they were in 2019, along with any rates for additional pay for dispatch trainers and pay allotted in accordance with the AFSCME-union collective bargaining agreement. Position and grade changes from the current salary ordinance are, I'm going to explain those. Actually, I will go over them. You've read them, you've received my memo, goes over in a lot more detail, but I will hit the highlights and be happy to answer more questions if you would like. And also, I would like to remind you that during budget hearings, each department head who had been offered a new position spoke to that during their presentation. Firstly, in economic and sustainable development, they're adding a special projects manager as a grade eight cost. The fiscal impact of this is $82,000, less the cost savings of paying for fewer contractor hours. In the legal department, they're adding another assistant city attorney, which is a grade 10, and this will allow an existing attorney to completely dedicate their time to utilities matters. The fiscal impact of this is a little over $100,000. In the Parks and Recreation Department, we requested adding two additional working-for persons at grade 108. These are AFSCME positions. First of all, the Switchyard Park, which we're all very excited about, needs a working-for person to help manage that park. And then, secondly, a working-for person dedicated to landscaping our city's natural areas and urban green spaces. So respectively, I believe, combined, those two jobs are valued at about $132,000. It's a total fiscal impact. In Public Works, they have an immediate need for sidewalk project management and many other projects. They also need operational support. So a new position has been created, grade eight, the title of Special Projects Manager, Special Projects and Operations Manager. The fiscal impact of this job is around $82,000. Now, Utilities Department has several new positions. I'll hit the highlights on those. A data analyst for grade seven, fiscal impact of $78,000. An environmental program specialist, replacing temporary positions, which is a grade six, and fiscal impact around $75,000 minus the cost savings for temporary employees who've been doing some of that work, or much of that work. The Dillon Plan is adding another wastewater plan operator, another, that's an AFSCME position as well, grade 106. This will help with the burden with 24/7 operation. The cost of that is around $66,000. And finally, as part of Green Infrastructure Initiative, which I know we've talked about before, Dr. Kelson has spoken of it before, there's additional line person, again, an AFSCME position, that grade 110, and a labor, grade 104. The fiscal impact of both of those jobs is about $67,000 and $65,000 respectively. Then we have some, as you know, we always have a few changes, housekeeping changes to existing positions. In the mayor's office, I skipped one. In the mayor's office, administrative coordinator has been downgraded from a grade five to a grade four. There's no fiscal impact to that. Position was vacant when we did it, so no fiscal impact. We adjusted the salary accordingly. And then in the CFRD, Community and Family Resources, the office manager was previously graded as a five, but actually is more of a grade three based on responsibilities. There's no fiscal impact there either. And then in the Parks and Recreation Department, our community relations manager, which was previously a grade seven, has moved to a grade eight. The fiscal impact of that is a little around $6,000. And then more about utilities engineering, they had a position that's been vacant, I think, almost the entire time since it was created, maybe the entire time, an engineering technician, which was a grade five. They realized that the requirements were too difficult to recruit people to that position, so they changed the position. It's now a grade eight and called the capital projects coordinator. Fiscal impact of that change is around $9,000. And I'm almost to the end, I promise. Just some other housekeeping changes. One affecting the, which I'm sure you're aware of, the Office of the Common Council, their assistant administrator, legal research assistant, has increased their hours by four hours a week, and that's, they've gone from .65 FTE to .8, I believe. I think I may be looking at the wrong memo, an old draft, but it's .8 FTE, with an overall fiscal impact of around $7,000. I'm, I'm, thank you. We worked on those numbers, but I apparently have an old copy of my memo here. And then finally, not finally, the fires logistics officer, as a matter of housekeeping, was on our civil city ordinance, and that's moving to the public safety ordinance. In human resources, we've had a couple of title changes that better reflect what people are doing. Our benefits manager is now just called the benefits manager, and the manager of workers' compensation at HR administrative functions, which is quite a mouthful, is now called the office manager. In Public Works and Animal Care and Control, we've increased part-time hours for grade 106 positions. 106 positions, also AFSCME positions, to full-time at their request, and we've also bumped the hours of an outreach coordinator to full-time. Fiscal impact of those changes are $40,000 and $13,000, respectively. Okay, I'm really close to the end, I promise. Okay, and then two positions in Public Works, street, are getting title changes to better reflect their work. Signal lighting specialist is now the street maintenance supervisor, and the signs and marking specialist is now the traffic manager. Also in Public Works, since we are adding a special project and operations manager of grade 108, the current special projects manager is being retitled coordinator, special projects coordinator, and that's more in line with other positions in the ordinance. And in Utilities TND, just, I can't believe we had missed this one, secretary is now called administrative assistant, which we feel is much more appropriate. These are all the changes for this particular ordinance. I'm happy to answer any questions at this time.
Thank you very much. I'll start off this time with questions.
Bless you.
Bless you. You gave us different numbers on fiscal impact. Did you by chance, Adama, what's the overall fiscal impact? Do you happen to have that?
So, Mr. Sherman, we talked about that. The overall fiscal impact is around $850,000. Does that sound right? So I'm always guarded about giving an overall fiscal impact because there's so many things that factor in and actually take away from the actual costs, like the temporary employees or replacing contractors.
We could just take the numbers of everything you cited, and based on that, what's the fiscal impact, overall fiscal impact?
I believe, Mr. Sherman, did you put a number in your, I don't have that in my memo. I can get that to you, though. I'm happy to get it to you. I can probably run up to my office and look at a spreadsheet and call you right back.
I'd just like to hear it. I mean, I'm hearing all these, and I'm sorry I didn't get the calculator and do it myself.
No, that's okay. Yes, I don't.
Okay.
Mr. Sherman has a number for you.
Yes. I do have a figure based upon the estimates provided by Ms. Shaw, and these are for the additional positions and the additional hours and the upgrades, and it was in the $800,000 range. $829,579 is what I came up to, but there is the caveat you heard from Ms. Shaw, and that is that these figures do not reflect the cost savings due to reduction in hours, and what you'll see in the material is that they're going, they're hiring regular help and having less temporaries, and so they say, "We're not even counting the savings," but they'll know that at the end of the year. But with that said, approximately $829,600, this does not include the three-year phase in of increasing the pay for the lowest-paid workers, and so that's not included in this number.
Okay. At some point for this budget, I want to know what you said with taking away everything else he said, and what is the fiscal impact at some point? It is probably lower than what we're saying. Just something that interests me. So, okay, we'll take, thank you. We'll take more questions from council, starting Councilmember Sterbaum.
I understood Parks was adding two positions to oversee overnight park supervision, but would that have showed up in this discussion, or?
I'm not familiar with what you're talking about. I'm just aware of two additional working-for persons.
Okay.
But there has been some discussions about other possible things we're thinking about for future years, but I'm not familiar with anything for this current year, unless it's being handled with temporaries.
Okay, thank you.
I can look into that, though.
If you'd check on that.
I'd be happy to.
Thank you. Councilmember Rallo.
Yes, Councilmember Sims's question has piqued my interest. I was going to say, this really is a number we should know, but because we don't know the reductions from savings, I can see that. But we do know last year's number. What I'd like to know is, how much did you ask for that was net increase before savings, and how much savings was there? I mean, if you want us to evaluate this request, we can't really do it without some hard data, and you have it. You may not have it tonight, but I would expect that you would. Can you get that?
Yes, yes. And Mr. Underwood prepared a spreadsheet on that, and we can verify those numbers.
Do you have that number now?
Well, I think that he's talking about for 2018.
Can you help me with that?
Yes.
Okay. Mr. Underwood will help me with that.
Right. So, you know, just go 12 months back and tell us what you asked for last year, and how much, and, I mean, what turned out to be the total net increase after you got reversions, let's call it that, okay? From reversion savings, whatever it was, you made an ask last year, just like she's making now, or I would say, Ms. Shaw, you asked that.
So, do you, I mean, I want to make sure, are you talking only new position requests? Are you talking overall per personnel?
Well, so we just heard you present the number of changes that you all are proposing. That's a certain cost. Mrs. Sherman estimates it at $830,000. We don't know how much we're going to save as a result of these changes, but you did make a similar proposal last year. I don't know what that total was, but we have all the savings in from that. What was that figure? Is that not an unreasonable, is that an unreasonable request?
No, no, not when you're Mr. Underwood. It's not unreasonable at all, except he's the numbers guy.
Well, thanks for volunteering him.
We work very closely together.
To do the work, but, yeah, I mean, I think that we should see that before we can fully evaluate this.
That's fair.
Request. Thank you.
Councilmember Granger.
Thank you. So basically, we're talking about a 2% increase, but the AFSCME is 2.5?
AFSCME negotiated a contract at the end of last year, and they negotiated a rate of 2.25%.
2.25. I knew I read that somewhere.
You're right, yes.
Thank you. Councilmember Pete Monssmith.
Yes, I was reviewing the, what are they called, common law positions? And I'm very pleased to see that we're now, all of them are now up to the living wage. I'm curious, though, about the crossing guard. So their minimum is $23 a day. I'm thinking that they work at least two hours, so at the most, they're making, what, $11.50 an hour, which is not our living wage. So can anybody speak to that?
I don't remember. I remember looking into this last year when we had the living wage discussion and questioning the same way, and Chief DeKoff, do you remember how many hours they worked in a day? So we can get back to you on that, to confirm that. That's probably the best way to handle it. I don't, I remember when I did the math last year, it wasn't, it wasn't, it was still okay, but I can double-check on that.
And remind me why Chief DeKoff would know this? Are they affiliated with the police department?
Parking enforcement, actually, sometimes does. They hire the crossing guards, I believe, right? Parking enforcement under the police department hires crossing guards.
I did not know that. Yes, please get back to me on that.
Okay, I'll be happy to.
Thank you. Any further questions from council? Seeing none, going to the public. Do we have any public comments? Seeing none, going back to comments of council? Councilmember Rallo.
This is the appropriate place to refer to what the mayor introduced, since we didn't have questions or comments on the climate action. I think several of us spoke in favor of, several of us spoke in favor of a dedicated person who would take on the effort to reduce carbon emissions as per our commitment, and as the mayor said, it does constitute a daunting task of 3%, 4%, 5% per year to get to our goal. It's not reflected in this budget. I continue believing that this is a very needed position. Just doing a little thumbnail sketch, I mean, you know, if we're going to reduce carbon emissions, we have to reduce energy use commensurate with that in order to, for it to reflect the decline in emissions. There'll be some marginal effect from sequestration. We will have some shift to renewables, so that will be part of our energy diet, although we're not, you know, we'll have to do it ourselves since we're not using hydro or much solar from Duke or nuclear here. And then, so it's a daunting task just in terms of that shift. I know we've benefited from a shift to natural gas, but then I think we need to dig deeper and really determine if that's clean or not, because it studies show there's a lot of leakage from fracked gas wells, and methane is much more, it's a much more potent greenhouse gas than CO2, so that shift from coal to natural gas is a bit in question. And then you've got all the players of the community. We're not just talking about the city reducing its emissions. We're talking about the university, private sector, nonprofits, neighborhoods, the whole population of Bloomington reducing its emissions, even as we add population, because we want to be at net zero by 2050. We're going to be growing as a city, so that means our challenge is even greater. So all of this, it seems to me, really requires somebody whose full duties is to make that effort and to assume responsibility, especially at budget time, when we ask, have we met our carbon emissions goal? And if so, you know, what are our successes? What are our failures? And what can we do about it? Otherwise, if it's dispersed to a number of people, it just, I fear that it will not, it will, as it's everyone's responsibility, it's no one's responsibility in a sense. So I wanted to just make that pitch. I don't see it in this budget. I truly hope that we can make our 4% or 5% emissions decline by the time we meet next year, and I'd like to, again, to lobby for that position because I think it's needed. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further council comments? Councilmember Granger.
I'm going to follow my colleagues' lead and note that there is no additional officer for the police department. I'm going to say it now. I'll say it under Preparation Ordinance 19-05. This is something that we've been asking for, for years, years, and we get a fight every year, and I'm not quite sure why. It bothers me. I don't, I hate to see our police officers overworked. I hate to think about who's out there trying to help us, and I, I just feel like there's a lack of maybe a communication between the mayor and city council. I know he's calling certain people to encourage them to, you know, understand what he's saying about the police, and that's his prerogative, and he has his view, but I am just concerned that we're not, that, you know, usually when I think about negotiations, I think of it as a back-and-forth, but there hasn't been any back-and-forth for years with us, and I'm really going to try to work with the administration to get more of a back-and-forth. We've given up a lot, I think, over the past, not a lot, I shouldn't say that. I think that we have improved all of his budgets in the past few years and have really not gotten a lot in return, and this is something that concerns me. So I'm just going on record as, that's why I will be passing on this one. Thank you.
Councilmember Ruff.
I've mentioned to the administration on more than one occasion that I think the position of the innovation director, at this point in human history, hands down, the most important innovation is to be dedicated to doing all what possibly can defy climate change, and I was not, I'm certainly interested in, and I understand that the administration is concerned and dedicated to this issue, but, and the time wasn't there to necessarily create that position, possibly this go-around, but that to use that innovation director position somehow, in some way, to make a major step towards climate action goals, or to somehow have some form of assurance that that would happen, and I haven't really, I haven't received that. I'm going to, so I'm going to be passing on this one tonight. Thank you.
Councilmember Pete Monssmith.
Yes, I want to second what my colleagues, Councilmember Ruff and Councilmember Rallo, have stated. I'll just read my written proposal that I'd sent to the mayor's office a few weeks ago, and that resulted in some discussions, but no commitments. The 2020 city budget should include funds for a full-time position of Director of Climate Action and Sustainability, reporting directly to the mayor and having the same authority as the department heads. This position should be in addition to and not in place of the current position of Assistant Director for Sustainability in the Department of Economic and Sustainable Development. The current Assistant Director of Sustainability could either continue working in ESD or work instead directly under the new Director of Climate Action and Sustainability. The Climate Action and Sustainability position is crucial to upholding the city's commitments to reduce greenhouse gas emissions in Bloomington and to implement new, more stringent commitments as called for in the October 2018 IPCC report. Not only are more staff hours needed than are currently available to address climate change, but the person coordinating these efforts must have the direct ear of the mayor and as much clout internally as any other department head. Reducing greenhouse gas emissions will require strong and lasting commitments, not only from all city departments, but also from the private sector, and only a high-ranking city government leader would have the clout to bring together the major players, such as corporations and nonprofits in our community. Only someone with a high level of skills and experience could have success in this challenging endeavor. Funding for this new position could come from a refocusing of the Director of Innovations portfolio, from a reduction or elimination of the residential curbside leafing program, or from a combination of other cuts, but it is essential that the city have such a position, both to fulfill its obligations and to enlist the private sector in reducing emissions. This is one of the more modest claims or demands that the climate strikers issued to the mayor last Friday, and I think it is imperative that we create and fill this position as soon as possible, if only to meet the goals that we've already stated that we're going to meet, because we just don't have enough staff time currently to do that. So while I appreciate what the mayor has done towards sustainability, I also appreciate and agree with him that it's not enough, and we need this Director of Climate Action Sustainability in our budget as soon as possible. So I do not see that listed in this particular ordinance, nor is it budgeted for in the civil city budget, which we will discuss next, and so at this point, I'm voting no. Thank you.
Councilmember Rallo.
Yeah, I think that the same concern I had about the police and fire budget applies to this one, too, but I wanted to point out to my colleagues that, and to the public in general, just a reminder, again, we don't set the budget. Our colleagues in the county, the county council, that's all they do, is the fiscal work, and even the commissioners, who are strangely the executive and the legislative combined, must go pad in hand to the county council for all their funding, whereas here, the administration sets the budget. We can only cut it. Well, we actually have two options. We can cut the budget in areas where we think it should be, either because we don't agree with the way that spending is done, or because we want to see spending somewhere else, or we can reject the budget wholesale, which would revert us to last year's dollars, and I don't think anyone really wants that. It's kind of a nuclear option. There's a reason why we go over a budget every year, because priorities change every year. But I haven't quite heard that yet from my colleagues, any kind of actual, I mean, if we really want to see a change, we must be prepared to vote no on the budget or to cut a budget in order to get some, one aspect of the budget, in order to get the administration to comply with our expectations. And so the fact that I'm not hearing it makes fact that I'm not hearing it makes me think that various members of this body are not as serious as they claim. And I don't mean to say put up or shut up. On the contrary, I am not sure how I feel, and that's why I'm glad we're having this debate. But I do agree with everyone who has spoken so far that our concerns aren't reflected in the proposal as presented. And I don't think we've heard enough yet from the administration to believe that our concerns will be allayed. So I hope that, I'm going to pass on this budget as well, because I share those concerns. I'm not sure what the right answer is. I just know that there's a disconnect right now, and I don't want to say that's unusual. We've been able to make that concern every year, but it's not common. Like, we, the past couple, three years, we've had much more agreeable budgets, I think. And I've heard praise from many of my colleagues for the budget that was eventually passed. So I, I hope that the administration will take this in the spirit that it's offered. But I also hope that my colleagues will offer some kind of concrete, what's the word I'm looking for, consequence if the administration does not meet your expectations. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further comments from the council?
Okay, I'll make a final comment. This ordinance nineteen dash twenty-one, I plan to vote yes, and I will support it. But like many of my colleagues, there is a somewhat of a hesitation. But mine is with the fiscal impact, the overall. Every item, not so much tonight, as we go through the process, there's going to be certain requests. Many of them are going to be increased. We hear about adding to the police department. We add about the possibility of some take-home cars. I mean, none of this is in concrete, but these are things that we hear and talk about. I hear about sidewalks every week, almost. We do, I think, this climate sustainability director. Many of my colleagues think we need that. And I think the innovation director, it probably don't get any more innovative than to create funding source to, to provide for a, a position that you want. But make no mistake, my overall concern is the impact on the tax, I'm sorry, the investment brokers. We normally say taxpayers, but it is an investment in our local government. But those are many of my concerns. And I don't want us to price ourselves even out of some of the markets that we're already out of due to certain incomes of our populations. So I just want to keep all that relative, so to speak, and hopefully we can get some other things done. And there will be cuts, as some of my other colleagues say, I think, in order for us to maintain our favorable income tax rates and property rates and all those things, which we all want as compared to other cities in the state. I think we have to really look at some things in order to maintain that, so that we just don't price other folks out of our Bloomington existence. So having said that, are we ready to consider a do-pass recommendation?
Move do-pass.
Second.
Recommend do-pass, yeah.
Thank you. We'll start on our right this time.
Pass?
No.
No.
Yes.
Pass?
Pass.
Pass.
Yes.
That's two yeses, two pass, two no's and four passes, two, two, four.
Thank you. Next item is ordinance nineteen dash twenty-two. It is to fix the salaries of all elected city officials for the city of Bloomington for the year 2020. And once more, we get the pleasure of hearing from Ms. Shaw, Director of Human Resources.
Thank you, Councilmember Sims. Ordinance nineteen twenty-two sets the maximum 2020 salary rates for city of Bloomington elected officials, which includes the mayor, city council members, and the city clerk. As you know, the mayor and the city council chose to defer any adjustments from the salary and benefits survey, survey until after 2019 general election. Councilmember's salary in 2020 will be eighteen thousand three hundred seven, which is the same as, same salaries if all members elected to receive the adjustment recommended by the survey back in 2017 over the three years. The mayor has chosen to implement only one-third of his recommended adjustment. The mayor's 2020 salary will be one hundred fourteen thousand five hundred fifty-eight dollars. And consistent with the current ordinance, ordinance nineteen twenty-two also assigns an additional one thousand dollars per year for the city council president and eight hundred dollars per year for the council vice president due to additional responsibilities incurred in those roles. Your approval for this ordinance is requested, and I'm happy to ask any, answer any questions at this time.
Thank you. Do we have any questions from my councilmembers? Did I see your arm? Councilmember stir bar? No. Okay, seeing none. Do we have any from the public? Seeing none. We'll go back to comments from my council colleagues. Councilmember Pete Mott Smith?
Yeah, I just want to, to say, I know that most members of the public only see us at the most once a week here on Wednesday evenings, but there is an awful lot of behind-the-scenes work that councilmembers do. It's about twenty hours a week, sometimes more. And so I think the salary adjustment is fair, even if I were not coming back for another term in January. I just think it's reflective of the amount of work that we do and the, the high level of work and the important decisions that we have to grapple with. It's not easy for any of us up here, and it takes a lot more time than one might think. So I'm happy to vote for this. I hope it is not perceived as, you know, those of us who have been reelected as voting to line our own pockets. If anybody would like to, you know, shadow me for a week and see all the work I do, I would welcome that. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Rallo?
Just to remind, I agree with what Councilmember Pete Mott Smith said, but just to remind that this is a consequence of a salary study that was done a couple of years ago, and, and salary adjustments were made except for elected officials until the elec, election year. And so we, we've been deferring those increases until this year. And thus, now we're, we're voting on the salary for next year. Many of those who deferred will not actually see the benefits of that, which is a shame, because it does require a lot of work. And my colleagues who aren't coming back next year are going to be, you know, have, have done it for a discount rate, I suppose. So I appreciate that. And, but it's the right thing to do so that we're within the range of most cities our size. Thank you.
Thank you. My comment is, I probably won't comment on the discount rate comment. Okay. Are we ready to consider a do-pass recommendation?
Recommend do-pass.
Thank you. We'll start on our left this time.
Yes.
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 Yes. Eight zero zero.
Thank you. I think we might be done with you, Ms. Shaw.
Thank you.
All right. Our next item is appropriation ordinance nineteen dash zero five. This is an ordinance for appropriation, appropriations and tax rates establishing 2020 civil city budget for the city of Bloomington. And Mr. Jeff Underwood, City Controller.
Good evening. Jeff Underwood, City Controller. Again, would like to thank my staff and department heads that have worked very hard on this budget. This, this is a balanced budget. It's also a continuation and taking the next step for program budgets. And just to remind you all, for this year, we did add population served to that, as well as some other changes that were asked for by the council. I just want to remind everybody that what you're seeing tonight is a different format completely. In August, we do more detailed budgets with memos, and they're actually program budgets. As we go to the formal adoption, there is one document that you approve, an appropriation ordinance, that is listed by fund, and then shows those funds that have a tax levy and the anticipated, anticipated tax rate for that. As a reminder, should you approve this budget, it then gets submitted to the Department of Local Government Finance, and then they have the responsibility to put the final approval on that and issue a budget order, which is mandated to be done by the end of the year. We do have a, a few days that we can respond to any changes that they might make. They do get the last swipe at it, so any changes to revenue estimates can impact those budgets and then make changes to that as stated. That said, I'm happy to report, for the first time since I've been presenting budgets, which I believe this is my nineteenth or twentieth, there were no changes between August and today. So the information that we presented in August, I'm going to cover quickly again for you to hit the highlights, and then we'll be available to ask any questions. In addition, the one thing that did happen between the hearings and this evening was the council did submit a number of questions in writing, and the administration did respond to those as well. So, that said, cash reserves, we ended 2018 with reserves in the cities general fund and the rainy day fund of fifty point nine percent of the actual expenditures for 2018. To put this in perspective, this would allow us to pay for approximately six months' worth of the city's general fund expenditures with, if we didn't receive any other revenues. We are projecting those levels to be thirty-nine point one percent at the end of this year, and thirty-five point eight percent at the end of 2020, again, exceeding our target of four years, four months in reserves. Revenues for the general fund, property taxes continue to be the most significant funding mechanism for that. The city's general fund, parks general fund, the cumul of capital development fund, as well as several of our bond obligations. In the city's general fund, property tax represents about fifty-one point two percent of the total revenues, and the state has estimated this source of revenue will increase by three and a half percent for 2020. And just a reminder that we are given this by the state. It's based on a seven-year rolling average of non-farm income statewide. So every unit of government that receives property taxes, regardless of the economics that they're, they see themselves in, we all receive the same growth quotient. The next highest in the general fund is local income tax. These are broken out into three categories, distributive shares, public safety, and economic development. The city's general fund receives distributive shares, and this represents about twenty-five point nine percent of the total revenues for the city's general fund. We also receive public safety lit, and I'll discuss those in a moment. And then finally, miscellaneous revenues, these are revenues such as fees for services, for fines, interest income, miscellaneous revenues, and reimbursements from state and federal government. They represent about twenty-two point nine percent of the revenues. For expenditures, the overall total budget, not including utilities or transit, is requested ninety-eight million six hundred and sixty-one thousand dollars, which is an increase of seven point five million dollars, or eight point three percent. This includes a twelve hundred dollar request from the Affordable Housing Fund and five million dollars from the Food and Beverage Fund, which is a new fund for this year's budget. Adjusting for these amounts, the overall increase is one point seven million dollars, or one point nine percent. In the general fund, the overall budget request is forty-six point seven five nine million dollars. This is an increase of one point five seven six million, or three point five percent. This increase reflects six hundred thousand dollars of one-time expenditures and a seven hundred thousand dollar decrease in property tax caps. Adjusting for these items, the general fund budget represents a three point six percent increase in comparison to 2019. The parks general fund, the request is eight point five two five million dollars, an increase of three hundred and twenty-two thousand dollars, or three point nine percent. Going back to public safety and the local income tax, we expect to receive five point three three six million dollars in PS Lit revenue and one point three six five million dollars in E911 revenue. These are broken down as follows, two point, two point six three million dollars for central dispatch, which is a combination of PS Lit and E911, which is another one point three six five million dollars, nine hundred and fifty-nine thousand dollars for police capital, and two point one one four million dollars for fire capital, as noted by the mayor. Other than for dispatch, we continue to use the, our share of PS Lit for capital replacement in the police and fire department. Just some breakdowns for you to show you how the expenditures get broken down. As you know, we budget in four categories. Category one is salary and wages. Category two is supplies. Category three is out, is other services, and category four is capital. This is taking a look at the city and parks general fund by function, which is different than the, the four categories that I mentioned. As you can see, public safety accounts for forty-four percent, parks and recreation fifteen percent, the tax caps are about two percent, services are twenty-four percent, capital three percent, and administration is twelve percent. When we look at it as a breakdown by the categories, you can see the most significant cost is personnel cost, and they represent seventy-three percent of the total parks and civil, civil city general fund budget. That's followed by services of ten point seven, supplies of one point seven eight eight, and capital of one point four, one four six, and the tax caps, as we've mentioned. Moving on to the overall budget, again, looking at function, you can see that public safety is thirty-five percent. Services, these are provided directly to the community, is forty-two percent, parks and recreation nine percent, capital represents one percent, administrative services nine percent, debt service three percent, and tax caps one percent. When we look at it from the categorical look, you can see that personnel, again, the biggest part of what we do. So of the total city budget, fifty-one percent goes to salary and wages. That's followed by services, which are thirty percent, supplies six percent, capital nine percent, and debt service of three percent. This is just historically what we've seen, the growth quotient in the levy. Since 2015, you can see where, where we were at two point seven and two point six. It then jumped up to three eight, four oh, three point four, and three point five. That's a part of that seven-year rolling average. So when the recession hits and, and wages drop across the state, then each year that you have a recession adds a bad year. As we've come out of that, we've begun to drop those off of there. So you've seen the growth quotient go up. I believe we've got one more year left from the recession era that will drop off. So I would expect that we will see, continue to see growth somewhere between three and a half and four percent for the next year. Next up is just showing you actuals, budgeted, projected numbers for 2018, 2019, and 2020. Again, this is looking at the bottom line of actual reserves being fifty point nine percent and projected of thirty-nine point one and thirty-five point eight percent. Next up is just showing you a breakdown of the general fund budgets, showing you 2018 actual, 2019 budget, 2020 budget, and the dollar change and percentage change by each of the departments. We'll note that the, the largest growth was in the controllers' budget, and that was an increase, the six hundred thousand dollars that we talked to you about last time, that will be utilized to buy document management software and community developed software that will be used by primarily housing and neighborhood development and planning and transportation. So we have some funds this year. This will help us with the implementation part of that. So that's a one-time expenditure that makes our budget jump up for that reason. This is just showing you historic cash This is just showing you historic cash and year-end cash balances since 2008. It also shows you what the rainy day percentages have been since that time, which fell to a low of 10.9% in 2008. And you can see that we're at, ended 2018 with 50.9%. And then you can see the changes in the various funds as well, and these represent the funds that you do appropriate. Up next is police and fire 10-year capital plan, going from 2020 through 2025, as well as future projects. So you can see those. And then finally, at the bottom is what we're actually able to fund out of those departments. So the total amount funded is $3,072,000. $2,114,000 of that will go to the fire department, and $959,000 will go to the police department. And then finally, we provided you with the capital requests by funds with details so that you could see that information that was requested, that we include that. So it lists the funds, and then if there's a department, it lists that. So obviously, in the general fund, you have various departments to get funded, and then primarily in the others, it's a single department, other than alternative transportation, where there are several departments. That's the conclusion of my remarks. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Okay, just one second before we go to council comments. The public comment portion of the deliberation on this item will constitute the statutorily required public hearing on the city budget for 2020. One other comment, I've been reminded by our city clerk that we still need to sign the form after this meeting for Resolution 19-14. Okay. Now, council, or comments, or que, I'm sorry, questions from the council members. Councilmember Rollo.
Thank you, Mr. Underwood. Referring back to a question I had earlier in the process in the budget, our budget hearings, and by the way, I'm very, I'm pleased with the reserve totals, pleased that we have achieved an upgrade in our bond rating. I am still concerned a bit, a risk of downturn, an economic downturn. We talked a little bit about that. And so we've got, say, a scenario where property values fall, AV falls. Lits would decline as people's salaries decline or people lose jobs. Food and beverage tax declines because it's discretionary spending and people are doing less of that. So you've considered all these things, and when we talked last, we, I was referring to 2008, which was a severe decline, and we weathered that. We had to do a lot of very quick belt tightening. We were fortunate in that no one was forced to leave a job at the city. Is that your worst-case scenario at this point? 2008?
Yes, I would think so. I think we're much better prepared to weather a storm like that. As you could see in 2008, the reserves were 10%. We're projecting four months' worth of reserves. So you have that. The advantage of a seven-year average is that it takes a while on the property tax side of things to lower your growth quotient. Again, with property taxes, it's, the rate is a combination of what is your levy? Did your levy go up or down? And did your assessed value go up and down then? So typically, what you will see if, more quickly, is if assessed value doesn't grow, your tax rate will go up, and then that will be followed by the lowering of your growth quotient on an annual basis due to bad years coming on. I had, you know, we pay attention, I do pay attention to what they're saying. We had a rating call yesterday with standards and poor on the utility refunding issue, and they say the same thing, that we're due, but they don't think it'll be, that they think that the economy is better prepared to weather that, that it won't be a 2008 situation. So we think 2008's kind of the benchmark for what is the worst thing that could happen. We think we're prepared. We talked to department heads about what would we do if we see that, have them thinking about what recommendations would they make to that. Obviously, the easy things are travel and training, capital replacement, but we can see what the results of those are. You typically see things like hiring freezes, where if they've got vacant positions. But again, that hurts those departments at that point in time that just happen to have a lot of vacancies. So we would take a much more strategic approach to it. I likened it to the state, when I worked at the state, I worked for IDAM. 90% of our budget was grant money. It was federal money. And the state, and the rest, really, our general fund budget was the match for those funds, and the budget agency would tell every, every department, you've got to cut your budget by 10% without any regard to a strategy of where does that make the most sense. And we would look at them and say, well, we, you know, if we cut 10% of our general fund budget, we're going to have a 90% decrease in federal funds that come back to us. So we would look at it very strategically to say, fund by fund, department by department, where would we need to make adjustments in order to weather the storm? But I think we're set up to do that.
What about, so if we're sort of, if we're anticipating a downturn, and we have growing debt obligations, so we take more bonds, that is something that persists during downturns, right? And how, where are we in your, in your view in terms of, not only our bonding capacity, but just in case of a downturn, the amount of debt obligation?
Right. One of the things we look at as we issue debt is two, two things, is what's the debt load per capita? Obviously, we don't want to be the highest in the state. We measure that, and we believe that we're relatively conservative with that. And it's also the revenue stream that's based on that. The one good thing is, if it's a general obligation bond, it's paid by property taxes, the state has to give you the funds to make those payments. The other thing, and we've talked about this, is you look at two things when you issue bonds, as far as how you would fund those. Do we have enough money to pay the debt, the annual debt service? And we call that, you know, one-to-one. And then secondly, in order to issue it, you look at coverage, and typically you want to be at one and a half to two times coverage, and we try to stay in that. So that would anticipate that you have additional revenues of at least 50% of what your obligation is in the event that those revenue streams would drop. So we think, again, we're prepared to do that. You also have to have a debt service reserve on every bond that you issue that's equal to one year, so.
What about debt based on anticipated self-liquidation by discretion, by revenue derived from discretionary spending? In other words, from food and beverage? So we talked about that declining during an economic downturn, and, but the debt persists, and we will need, might tap into other sources. That's probably what concerns me the most, I think, is that.
Again, that's why we look to have coverage, available revenues of between one and a half to two times what the annual debt service is. So in a sense, that if there's an economic downturn, you would eat into that coverage first. So we're saying that at a minimum, that's usually 50%. So you would have to see a 50% decline in those net revenues before you would get down to, okay, now we're going to have trouble making our bond payments.
Okay. Thank you.
And the city has never defaulted on a bond issued, in its entirety.
Yeah. Thank you.
Councilmember Bowden?
Yeah. We're at 50%, did you say, in our general fund?
We were at the end of 2018.
What do we expect that figure to be at the end of 2019?
35, 39.1, and at the end of 2020, 35.8.
So we're spending down the excess in the general fund?
Well, we expected to come back down to the targeted, the target, which is four months or about 33%. So we expect to be slightly above what the target is.
Right, but I mean, I've also noticed a pattern that we sort of keep, we keep, the excess keeps going up year by year. Maybe it's because revenues are going up higher than we can spend it. But I guess what I'm wondering is, did you assign that excess revenue to, you know, like new programs and positions, or?
What we do is, we come to you, at the end of each year, you know, we tell you, this is how much we reverted back to the various funds. The program that we currently have in place is departments can utilize that up to 50%, and then the administration may utilize the other 50%. We typically try to look at one-time expenditures for that, so that it's not an ongoing commitment. And then the other half is, in previous year, last year was, in 2019, was the first time that the administration didn't come forth to utilize those funds.
Did not.
Did not. The other half of those reversions. We elected to put it into the reserve specifically thinking about, we are past due for a downturn, and this is just additional cushion.
Maybe I should ask this then. The two issues of this year's budget seem to be police and climate change. How much of the excess in the general fund is going to address one of those two priorities?
I don't have that specific number in front of me. We have the amounts, I can tell you from, in the case of the fire department, they're getting a 1.58% increase, so there's $173,000 going there. In the police department, $617,000, so a 5% increase there.
And what's that figure based on? I mean, does that have anything to do with the salary negotiations, or just other costs?
Other cost increases. And then, you know, there are, there are, there are non-uniformed officers and other civilian staff that will receive 2%. So that's included in this calculation.
And that's 617?
Yes.
Okay. And I guess climate change is addressed by the new position?
It's addressed by some of the things that the mayor talked about in his discussion of commitments to the climate change and innovation is, or sustainability. Those things are already baked into the budget, and there may have been increases in those items.
Maybe I should narrow the question just a little bit and ask, of these new dollars, how many of them are going to ongoing operational expenses as opposed to one-time costs like buying a new vehicle or a solar panel or something like that? In other words, are we funding ongoing personnel, you know, or we're making a commitment to new personnel with those dollars?
Yeah, as you saw, the general fund, the Parks General Fund, 71% of the budgeted expenditures are for salary and wages. That would go towards ASME union contract that's in place, the fire department budget that's in place, the 2% for civil city, the last increase in the three-year plan, as well as increases that the council and the mayor had deferred that are included in this year.
Okay, I mean, I'm not able to formulate my question tightly enough, but I'm looking for a little bit more precise thing. I'll try to word it in a separate email. Thank you.
Sure.
Councilmember Granger.
Thank you. So I think you said $400,000 request from the housing fund, but then I thought?
A million, two.
Okay, because I thought I had read 1.2, but I couldn't find it.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
And that's assuming on the revenues coming into the fund. As we noted, you appropriate, but if the money doesn't come into the fund, then we won't be able to spend it. But we're anticipating that we'll receive about 1.2 million dollars.
So do you have, what are the projects that we're using this money for?
Those have not been identified at this point.
And so how did you come up with the 1.2 million? Or how did we come up with it?
It was an estimate of what we, you know, of available dollars that we would have to spend.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Piedmont Smith.
Yeah, Mr. Underwood, could you tell me again the general fund budget amount? Because either I misheard, or it was for some reason different than what's on Form 4?
These are the amounts for the general fund. I can give you, the total is $46,759,329. And you will note that there is a difference of about $968,000.
Yes, I will note that. Why is that?
That's the property tax caps. So if you look, I believe we've got it listed on, let's see, I'm trying to look here. I thought it, yeah, here it is. Right after the police department, property tax caps, it was $1.639 million in 2019. It's $938,792. This, this is, I'm surprised Councilmember Bowden didn't bring it up again this year about the crazy way that they make us do this. We have to budget for it, but then when they do the appropriation ordinance, it comes out and nets back too, even though we have, it's a department in their forms that we have to budget for. So it make, believe me, I redo the math about 16 times to make sure that it balances back. But the difference between the form, the appropriation ordinance and the numbers listed is the property tax caps, dollars amount.
So when I look at the budget forms for DLGF, where are those property tax caps? Where is that amount on here?
It is not included on the, hang on.
Because there's a big, there's a zero in the, where I thought it would be, which is the controller's budget?
It's, it gets footnoted. If you look at, on the actual appropriation ordinance, Budget Form 4, that's, that's my note, is that it's not listed at all, even though we have to budget for it. If you look at the exhibits, and you look at the notice to taxpayers, it's listed at the top of the form. Gives the estimated civil city max levy, and then property tax cap credit estimate of 938,792. It's very convoluted and very confusing. I agree.
So let me just get down to brass tacks here for people who are paying property taxes. The proposed property tax rate is 0.9184%, right?
Yes. That's the, that's the advertised rate.
So what is the rate for 2019? How much are people's taxes going up or down?
Well, we won't know that until the final budget order, because there's two things that happen. This is anticipated, and that's, we always advertise that higher than what we anticipated. So the advertised rate is, for the general fund, is 91.84 cents. Currently, I think the total, so the total listed here is 1.35, and I think we're at like 89 cents. So I anticipate that it'll be closer to the 89 cents than it will be the advertised rate.
So for taxpayers who will pay property taxes for 2019, what is the rate they will pay for the city of Bloomington?
It's, it'll depend, sorry to be, it depends on what township you live in, there's a different rate. But the city's tax rate overall is about 89 cents for 2019. And that's for all of the, all of the adopted levy funds that you see on the appropriation ordinance.
And so when we look at the 91.84 cents, you're saying that that's a maximum and it may actually be less?
Yes.
What does that depend on?
Depends on the final budget order. So this, the budget may be decreased because of less revenues that they estimate towards the end of the year, and the final assessed levy, or assessed values. And the impacts of the And the impacts of the property tax caps. So these are all estimates as far as the tax rate and the levy that we use. They're all estimates and the state gets the last swipe at that and we won't know it until the end of the year. And then the rates get advertised after that.
Okay. So the assessed value, that's just an estimate at this point?
It's just an estimate. And, and we, we get an estimate and because of the way you have to advertise, we utilize a number less than that so that if there's an error made either by the state or by the city, which so far there's not been any made, it falls within that tax rate.
Okay. Thank you. I have other questions, but I'll wait.
Councilmember Granger.
This is a follow-up to that. So you say you're advertising at 9.9184, but the budget that we're looking at is, is based something closer to 89, I mean, 89 cents?
If you look at the bottom of your appropriation ordinance, so the Form 4, you're seeing that state, there's, there's two sets of funds, state-controlled and local-controlled. So what you're voting on is the adopted budget and the estimated tax levy. We advertise the rate based on an assessed value that's given to us that we use a lesser number up so that when you look at the bottom line on page one, the estimated tax rate is 1.35 cents. We, the current rate for all of those funds is about 89 cents. We anticipate that by the time it's all said and done and the state does their final calculations, that we'll be somewhere, somewhat, some, a whole lot less than the 1.35. It'll be closer to the 89 cents that we see today. So if you look historically, the advertised tax rate is always higher than what the final tax rate is. And it's a function of how we have to do budgets in Indiana.
Okay. Thank you.
Councilmember Piedmont Smith, did you have a follow-up question?
I had a totally separate question. May I?
Yes.
So in the, let's see. You provided us with a list of expenses over $100,000 that are not in category four and thank you for doing that. The parking meter fund has $250,000 for downtown outreach grants. What are those?
Those are the services that the police department utilizes with social service agencies to assist with issues in the downtown and the DRO program. The chief chair, if you have specific questions about that. I believe we contract with, I'll let you.
That is the grant money that the DRO program gives out to our partners and the social service agencies.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Any, Councilmember Granger?
Thank you. I'm looking at the, the fire pension and the police pension. I'm just wondering why they're so different. I mean, I guess I would have thought they'd be closer, but why, why is it?
It's, these are legacy funds way back when. Units of government, if they had police and fire departments, created their own retirement funds. And then in the late 70s, as many of those were going bankrupt and pensioners were not getting paid, the state took over all pension funds. So they administer all pension funds. However, because these legacy pension funds have to stay with the city, we get estimates from the local pension secretaries with the police and fire department. Those are submitted to the state. They review them. So the long answer short is, it's based on the number of pensioners and survivors that are on the system. Eventually, these will phase out. Again, this is an odd one where we fund the current year out of the monies that are in the account and the state reimburses us after the fact for the actual expenditures.
You know, I think, I probably asked that last year because that sounded like a familiar answer, so I apologize for asking.
That's no problem. Happy to answer them.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any further questions from council? Seeing none, do we have any comments from the public? Appropriation ordinance 19-05 is where we are. Seeing none, going back to the council? Seeing none, are we? I'm sorry. Councilmember Piedmont Smith.
Yeah. There are several, there are a lot of good things in the budget, but there are several disappointments in the budget as well. I mentioned previously that I think it's vital we have a director of climate action and sustainability that is not funded in this budget. I agree that we need more sworn police officers than are proposed in the current budget. There are some smaller things that I think should be addressed. The parking cash-out option for city hall employees. Currently, city employees pay just a pittance of, what, $2 a year to park on prime real estate in downtown Bloomington. I don't want to penalize employees who have to drive. A lot of them can't afford to live in the city, as we know. Rates for housing are very high here. And I don't want to penalize anybody, but the parking cash-out is a way to, and I'm sure Councilmember Volan can speak more authoritatively on this, but it's, it's a way to give all employees a little boost in income and that way, those who can use different ways to get to work, either transit or bike or walk or carpool, can save that money and they don't have to pay that money. And it would be an amount that is commensurate with the prime location of our parking lot. And it might also open up parking spaces for visitors. And anyway, Councilmember Volan has been talking about this for years and again, in response to questions, this time around, he received the response that they need more time to study it. So that, that is disappointing that we didn't have better answers. I know that there are some tax implications. I believe on the federal level, it can be considered tax-free income or a deduction that's made before taxes, but I don't know what the state of Indiana rules are on that. So obviously, I would need more study, but I had hoped that the administration would, would be able to act on that proposal. It is a way to incentivize transportation other than single-passenger vehicles, which we need to do. In addition, the, many programs of parks and recreation, of course, operate on a subsidy, but what is particularly jarring for me is that the golf course has $164,000 subsidy each year and this is subsidizing a very unsustainable use of land, which requires a lot of upkeep and could better be used in more environmentally friendly ways, such as planting trees. And the fact that we subsidize it is disturbing to me. We're, we just built a great new clubhouse, more throwing good money after bad, in my view. The Eastside Senior Center doesn't have any money in this budget and it's been a very popular new program in the college mall. And I know it was just a pilot program this year and, you know, maybe they'll come to the council and ask for Jack Hopkins' social service funding, but that was not made clear and that, it seems like it's a program worth some institutional support from the administration. Now, as I'm listing all these ways to spend money, I also want to mention one thing that I think we can cut and we should cut, and that is the $900,000 we spend on sucking up leaves at the curbside for residences around the city. I don't propose we go cold turkey, but I think this is something that we should charge people for and we should have a robust education program to let people know the different options they may have to compost those leaves on their own property. But, I mean, paying, as we heard during the budget hearings, it's a service that nobody likes because it always comes at the wrong time and it's very difficult also for people who are accepting those leaves as compost because the vacuums vacuum up everything in their path and not just leaves. So it's just a very problematic program that I would hope to not see again in next year's budget. So these are some of my concerns about the budget. Of course, the big one, as I mentioned earlier, is that I think we need dedicated, a dedicated high-level staff member to address climate change and that is not found here in this budget. And that's, well, I haven't decided whether I'll vote no tonight or vote pass, but I'm not ready to vote yes, that's for sure. Thank you.
Councilmember Sandberg.
Thank you. As Councilmember Piedmont Smith has pointed out earlier, as we were discussing the salaries of police officers, it really is out of this body's hands with respect to that ongoing negotiation. It certainly is my desire, as we've already expressed up here, that we can come to some agreement with that as I think salaries are important for dealing with recruiting, dealing with retention and dealing with morale. It is this budget that we're looking at right now in which we could make our points about our desire to have more of a hard look at our staffing levels for the police department. And as I hear my colleague Isabel Piedmont Smith talk about her kind of specifics as to what she's disappointed about in the budget and where we might make other cuts, I am very well aware that our job up here is not to increase this budget, but all we can do is cut. And the last thing I want to do for the police department is to cut them. However, I think my vote will be a pass tonight just to make my strong opinion heard about my concern that we're hearing one thing from the administration. There are no recruiting problems, there are no retention problems, but yet we're hearing another side of that story from the police themselves. And so I, while a lot of these discussions typically take place in our May budget advance when we as council members are sharing with the administration what our priorities are so that the staff and, and our wonderful controller can work on those things throughout the year, I agree, this is kind of late in the process to start recommending things. That said, my suggestion of hiring consultants to take a look at this, if we can't come to an agreement about what we need and why and where the resources might come. But I just will say in closing, we have a morale problem and that's never a good thing. And so my challenge back to the administration is while we're back to the, hopefully, we're back to the negotiating table to get the salaries for the officers straightened out through that appropriate process, that we are also thinking about how we address that morale problem, either through better communications. How are we going to retain? How are we going to better recruit? Because I'm, I'm fairly convinced that we have more of a problem than maybe we're being led to believe. And I think that will have some serious consequences into the future if we don't really address that in this year. So while it may be too late in this budget round, I just want to put some things out there that I think we all should be looking to try to solve and to make our police officers feel that they are respected, they are well-supported, because those are not easy jobs. And so that is, that is my main concern with this budget. Thank you.
Councilmember Volan.
Yes, thank you. I don't agree with the idea that salaries are entirely out of our hands. Again, while our power is to cut and not to increase, we absolutely can have an impact, it's just not direct. We can have an indirect impact that's still very strong, but a majority has to believe that, that action will remedy the problems that they identify. I will be passing again on this item tonight as with the previous ones, although I may not be so inclined to pass on the utilities and transit budgets because they're less controversial and separate. But I think if there's one thing that is coming out of this debate tonight for me, it's, I'm not sure anybody who's been present in this room is particularly enamored of the leaf collection program. I mean, I, it does seem increasingly absurd. Like, in a time of climate change, we're spending gasoline to go out and collect leaves to do what with them? They could, I mean, I, I can't remember the last time I raked leaves in my own yard. I don't see a particular need to do so. I mean, I think we have a, still have this obsession with lawns and grass that is, you know, if there's one thing I think that politically we can come closest to agreeing to on change from previous years is, you know, rethinking lawns, for God's sake, let alone collecting leaves. You know, I, that's $900,000 that could be put to many other uses, not the least of which is, you know, a breakthrough in the negotiation between the police union and the city or any number of other programs, maybe a combination of them, but I am having a hard time supporting leaf collection. I'll have to say that. Thanks very much.
Mr. Underwood.
I just want to point out, understand that the whole city budget, the funds are not fungible. So the cutting of the leafing program could not be used for the police department. I just, I have to, I have a fiduciary duty to point that out, that it can only be used for the purposes of the fund itself. So in that case, this is paid out of the street department. It could go to other street department programs, but it could not be used for police and fire salary wages.
So the street department program, like a, what else could we use that money for in streets? Sidewalks, maybe?
Sidewalks, streets.
Could we add new sidewalks? Because that's, that's money that, right now, the administration has put in the council's fund, the council's budget.
It wouldn't be, it wouldn't be transferable to the council sidewalk fund, but it could be utilized inside the street department for the sidewalk program that they administer as well.
And does that involve the building of new sidewalks or that's maintenance of existing sidewalks?
Both.
Okay. If it can, if it can be used to build new sidewalks, then the $300,000 that the council has graciously been given by the administration for the express purpose of building new sidewalks could be partially repurposed for some other function. I agree that the funds are not fungible, but practically speaking, you know, I think we can find some better uses for them than whatever leaf collection. Thank you for the clarification, though.
Councilmember Sterball.
I was just going to say, I'm supportive of everything Susan Sandberg said and that's why I'm going to pass also.
Councilmember Rallo.
Yeah, just reflecting on comments that are made, I'm not in disagreement with many of the comments that are made. I don't think that, you know, this, necessarily this budget is, should reflect, you know, elimination of the, of the leaf program or even a major reduction in it. I think that it's, I think what we need is a transition and I think that, I think that there probably would be a lot of room for the public, given alternatives, to, to reduce that service voluntarily, but that's something that needs to be explored. And because people do rely on it at this point. I mean, it's not, if it went away this fall or next fall, it would be problematic for people. That's not to say that it's justified and we ought to continue. It's just the transition occurs. I'm also cognizant of that, as the mayor said at the beginning, that this administration has done a lot for climate and it's done a lot for its commitment to emissions. I understand there's an emissions report coming soon and I've never seen an administration step up and do as much for solar power, for instance, you know, efforts for waste to, to energy generation, millions of dollars devoted to stormwater. You know, efforts for waste to energy generation, millions of dollars devoted to stormwater, green infrastructure. These are all very important things. And so the fact that we don't get exactly what we, you know, I think it's a reflection of how the budget process works and the fact that we make it known at this stage how we feel, you know, is perfectly legitimate and good. There are also raises in this budget, and I'm not going to compromise, I'm not going to vote against the budget that does so much good and also includes raises for employees. So I'll join my colleagues tonight in passing, but I anticipate supporting it, supporting this budget in the end, because on balance, it does a lot of good. So I'll leave it at that. Thanks.
Thank you. Councilmember Roff.
I want to follow up on a comment that Councilmember Sandberg made during the earlier ordinance discussion, ordinance 1920, before Councilman Piedmont Smith pointed out that it's probably more appropriate to discuss during 1905. So Councilmember Sandberg said she thought maybe it was the time, might be time to have a third-party consultant, look into, look into the staffing levels, the adequacy of staffing levels, and some of these other questions. And the reaction I read from the administration's response at the podium was pretty lukewarm, to say the least. And what I want to say is, you know, we as council members have been getting bombarded with conflicting information, conflicting data, conflicting evidence, conflicting arguments. And I don't know about the rest of my colleagues, but I don't have the resources or expertise to sort it out. You know, the budget of the police department is like $20 million or something, it's huge. So the expenditure of a consultant to get some outside, third-party information that we as council members can face both the administration and the police honestly on, is, it doesn't, it seems like a very reasonable and responsible request. It's a relatively small commitment for such a fundamental and a large part of the city's budget. You know, this administration has not been reluctant in the past to use consultants for lots and lots of things. I think this certainly rises to that level of importance. So I really, I'm not going to be around next year to express, as a council member at least, my frustration if this kind of thing, if this information doesn't come to us in a better, more clear way. Which leaves me with little to do, except protest now, by certainly saying, I'm going to pass tonight, and I might, I might vote no when the vote comes, if I don't get a better sense that that's, that the administration's taking that very seriously, that moderate, reasonable request. So thanks, Councilmember Sandberg, for making it. Thank you.
Councilmember Granger.
Thank you. I want to follow up on my colleague, Mr. Roff. I believe that I felt kind of dismissed after Ms. Sandberg made that proposal because it's so late in the budget process. But I'm going to go back to the fact that it's not late in the budget process. I've been asking for this. I asked for this this year, I asked for it last year, I think I even asked for it the year before. And it's just, now it feels like there's a lot of effort to prove that we don't need something. But I, in my heart, feel that we do, in my head, I feel that we do. And if a consultant can come in and help us weed through all this, I think that's great. And I think it shouldn't be dismissed. I do want to make a comment about what the mayor said in his initial comments, I want to make a response. He was talking about all this money that has been put into the police and the dispatch in the last few years, but as Ms. Piedmont Smith pointed out, we had a huge influx of PS Lit money. And I don't, and that was included in this. We also, the police and the dispatch budgets are separate. And it just, that just kind of seemed disingenuous. Also, the police department has been, the parking staff have been folded into the police department and their budget. So that just didn't feel, didn't sit right with me. All I'm asking for is one additional officer in 2020. That's all I asked for last year. I'm just one additional officer. And what we've been doing up here, you know, and talking about the leaf program and other options, is we're trying to help the mayor figure out how to make this happen, so that other people don't lose their jobs, we can't raise the budget, but all I'm asking for is one additional police officer. And I am willing to vote no. Again, I won't be here next year. I feel like I, you know, I tried to be a good girl with all these budget discussions in years past, and it just, it just bothers me that he's not willing to listen, because it's not like this is a new request. The request for the person who would attend to our climate concerns. The mayor said to us that, well, we, you know, if we focus on climate here in Bloomington, then, you know, businesses might go to other communities. And I don't think that, I don't agree, but let's say it does. We could have a person who reports to the mayor, who does outreach with other communities and helps them build on the expertise that we are developing, so that it's not just Bloomington that's, you know, trying to make this commitment, but working with other communities that will benefit everybody. I would love to see that. I know some people are saying, oh, that's just pie in the sky. I know people have compared this request for a person to the whole discussion about Y2K. You remember that discussion? Remember those, that year? And they say, oh, see, nothing happened about it, nothing's going to happen about the climate. And that's not true. People don't realize how hard and dedicated our technology people were to try to deal with this issue of the Y2K and what could happen. They did a good job, so nothing happened. We could do a good job now, so that nothing happens, or everything happens for the good. Yeah, I can't believe I brought up Y2K, but I think I read a letter to the editor. One additional officer, sworn officer. And I think that we should follow Cruzan's lead and develop a plan for adding additional officers. I think the officers would feel there's a commitment on the part of the city administration. If we could get them to commit over the next four years to add so many officers, I'm, we could do four years, seven officers, and I think that would be, that reflects our population as it is now, and I'm pretty sure the population is going to grow. Visitors to the community are going to grow. Issues are going to grow. And I think we need to have officers, sworn officers, to help us as we move forward with all these challenges. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Any further comments? Okay, then I'll be the last one, I think, except for I think there may be more after this comment. I really value the comments and the expertise of my colleagues, and one or two of the comments I've heard tonight kind of distresses me, so I don't think there's a need to, so much protest now, just like all the rest of our citizens. They contact us via email, they call us, they write us letters, they come and make public comments. So this is not the last hurrah as we move forward. I just kind of wanted to say that. We have talked about a lot of things, climate change. I don't think there's any disagreement that it needs to be addressed. I think part of the discussion is how do we get there? And what are some of the things we do? So I think we're all willing to talk about it, we're just going to have to work out how we get there. I'm okay with that. Maybe we just write another ordinance and say, we no longer cut grass in this city. We no longer cut grass on your private property. I think that's going to have a positive effect on climate change. Okay? I'm okay with the leaf suck, as we call it, I don't know, there's another term for it. I don't so much have a problem with that, but like my fellow colleague, and we've talked about this before, I want more of a phase in, because I don't want us to get some unintended consequences to do some other things, or trying to get some other things done. And then particularly, I don't particularly want to have to deal with the leaves in our sewer system right away. So what, how do we mitigate these things? How do we work toward where we want to go without creating these sorts of things? Sidewalks, you know, I've heard some things about the golf course. I'm a golfer, okay? Don't make me a bad person, don't make anybody who says, get rid of them, a bad person. But as opposed to saying that, maybe we say, we got three nines, let's talk about maybe removing one. Even though I don't want to talk about that either, but I'm just saying, there's room for all of us to work toward the same goal. And when we go to certain different things, then you automatically, you know, turn somebody else off. And I'm not saying that happens, so I don't want anybody to jump on me, but I just think there's a better way to get to where we're going. I am happy with the progress this city has done. Can we do more? Should we do more? Of course. Of course. I work out here in the community, when you couldn't afford to put solar on your house, and you get some of these, Solar Indiana and other opportunities and some grants, and people that are willing to help do sweat equity to put it on your house. We've come a long way, and I don't want us to have these conversations in many cases where we disregard all of that. And I think we can get there. Okay? I think we can get there. I think golf courses add to the quality of life, as do trails, as do parks. I'm not putting them in the same thing, but we'll consider all of that, and I am willing to work on certain things, even if I don't particularly get what I want. If it's best for the community and best for the health of us, there is no planet B. I think I heard someone say that tonight. I think we're all in agreement with that. So having said that, are we ready to consider a do-pass recommendation?
Recommend you pass.
All right, let's start on our left this time again, I think.
Pass.
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 Yes.
No.
Pass.
Pass.
That's a 1-1-6 move.
Okay, thank you. Moving to the next item, appropriation ordinance 19-06, and ordinance adopting a budget for the operation, maintenance, debt service, and capital improvements for the water and wastewater utility departments of the city of Bloomington, Indiana for the year 2020. We have asked Vic, Mr. Kelson, Director of Utilities Department, to join us this evening.
Good evening. I'm Vic Kelson, Director of Utilities. I have with me Laura Pettit, who's our Assistant Director for Finance. We can answer any questions that you have. Just a few short remarks. The city of Bloomington Utilities exists to provide safe and sustainable water, wastewater, and stormwater services, in an economical manner, promoting prosperity and quality of life in our community. We will be engaging actively in three ma, or sorry, six major initiatives that drove our goals for the 2020 budget year. That's increasing capacity for wastewater treatment, continuing our improvements in drinking water quality, completing the installation of the advanced metering infrastructure, the smart meters, continuing our program of water main replacements, making major improvements to our stormwater system, and just overall process modernization through the utility. We have three funds. We have a water utility, water and our, the Water Works budget proposed for 2020 is $19.19 million. That's a $7,000 difference from 2019. That reflects the fact that we're in the middle of a rate cycle and we're not anticipating growth in demand, so we'll get the same amount of money. On the, for the sewer works, we are proposing a budget of $24.29 million. That's a change of about $107,000 compared to 2019, and that reflects the changes that the council made in 2017 to our connection fees. The biggest change overall is the stormwater utility. Last year, late in the year, council approved a change in our stormwater rate, and that stormwater fee, sorry. And so the 2020 budget is $3.166 million. That's a $1.619 million increase compared to 2019. That reflects the $400,000 investment in green stormwater infrastructure, doubling of our neighborhood stormwater infrastructure program, and the debt service for several large stormwater projects that will be beginning in 2020, including the, we're not sure what to call it, Big Dig 2020 or something, that will complete the Jordan River Tunnel project. I'm happy to answer any questions you might have about our budget proposal.
Thank you, sir. Do we have any questions from council? Councilmember Piedmont Smith.
So what was the increase in the wastewater services portion of the budget?
It's about $107,000.
And does that take into account the increased fees that we just passed last week?
Ah, I meant to mention that. It does not. When we wrote the budget, we, the council had not yet taken final action on that item. So as we said, the primary reason for the increases there is to cover major capital projects. So that money will go into our extensions and replacements, the extension and replacements portion of our budget, and will be used to subsidize the execution of large capital projects.
So that doesn't need to be in this budget to be spent next year?
Jeff, do we need to amend it?
No, this is, because they're on a cash basis, they would have to take it back to their board to expend any funds above what's been approved by the utility service board.
So we can pass this appropriation, and then when they start getting the increased income from the wastewater fees, then their board can approve additional appropriations?
That's correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Councilmember Sterbohm.
Would you like to take a chance to talk about these storm drains?
I'd love to. You know, leaf litter, grass cuttings from people's yards, weeds that people pull and leave in the driveway, and they flow down the street, they end up in storm drains, and they plug storm drains. In fact, we probably get, I don't know, 20 or 30 calls a year to my office that were referred by council members regarding clogged storm drains that need to be cleaned. So if the, if Public Works doesn't collect those leaves, I'm very concerned that we're going to have a lot of stormwater problems with flooding, flooding in people's yards, flooding people's basements, flooding our streets. We, every time there's a rain event, we have people from TND out there with the vector, vacuuming leaves out of storm inlets. So you're going to vacuum them up, or scrape them up, or rake them up, and carry them away one way or the other. That's, and so the reality for us is that leaves plug storm drains. So when we start thinking about changing a leaf program, we should really consider all aspects of it, because stormwater is a big problem and a source of a lot of complaints for our customers. I'm not saying, I'm not saying don't change it, I'm saying there's, you know, there are some real negative side effects from stopping that program.
Yes, follow-up question there about how much does it cost?
Yes, follow-up question there about how much does it cost to remediate a clogged storm drain?
Well, the problem isn't the remediation of the storm drain, it's the damage that the flooding did. We, if you don't, we have to go out and, we're always out there monitoring our storm drains anyway. So if they're, if they're clogged up with debris, then we have to go out and either rake it and collect it, or we have to go out there with a vacuum truck and suck it up, so, to get rid of it. So we do, we end up doing some of this anyway, and we'd end up doing a lot more of it, I fear, especially in the fall when there's a lot of rain.
Okay. But I mean, we already know we're spending almost a million dollars a year for preventive leaf collection that you're also already doing. I mean, short of getting everybody to create yards that don't create material runoff, are we duplicating work at all? I mean, couldn't we just let it, leave it all to utilities?
That's up to the council to decide.
Just thinking out loud. Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Fellow councilmembers. Seeing none, going to the public. Seeing none, coming back to the council for a final comment. Councilmember Granger.
Thank you. When I'm talking about, when I'm thinking about the, this isn't your department, but thinking about the leaf sucking, to quote my colleague.
Back in.
I heard you, never mind. It's not, I don't think it's anyone's intention up here to eliminate the program right now. I mean, I think that there are things that we could do, and we should do. If we're caught talking about cutting back, we need to do a lot of education around composting and, and re, leaf raking and bagging and that sort of thing, and the concerns about, we should do the concerns about the grass clippings and the leaves in the gutters now. I mean, that, in my neighborhood, it's, it's pretty severe. It just all goes in the downhill. But, so I don't want you or whoever asked that question, oh dear. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Sterbaum, that we weren't just saying, ah, you know, cut it off the top. Everything has to go along with an education program about why we might recommend doing this. Thank you.
If I may, Councilmember Sims, the, I will point out that we have been doing adult education through our stormwater program about this specific topic. And it has been something we've been talking to people about. And occasionally, if I see someone mowing their lawn and the grass is flying out in the street, I do stop and talk to them. So we are working, we are working on that, but it's a big job.
Thank you. Any further comments?
Thank you.
And grass clippings on the street wreak havoc on bicycle riders as well. I mean, there are many things for us to talk about in getting to where we need to go, and I'm confident we can get there. And the phase in, as we've all talked about it, I think it'll work. So.
Move to Ms. Second.
All right. I'll start on my right this time. Councilmember Ruff.
Yes.
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 8-0.
Thank you. Let's do pass recommendations, eight, recommendation of 8-0. And finally, appropriation ordinance 19-07. Appropriations and tax rates for Bloomington Transportation Corporation for 2020. And last and certainly not least, we've asked Mr. Lou May, General Manager of Bloomington Transit, to join us.
Good evening, Lou May, General Manager, Bloomington Public Transportation Corporation. Good to be here for the second time to discuss our 2020 budget at Bloomington Transit. As Mr. Kelson said, I'll be brief with my comments as well, maybe even briefer than he was. I will, I will tell you that there's been no changes to our proposed 2020 budget from what I originally presented to you in August. We are proposing a budget of $13,975,250, and that's about a 33% increase over last year. I will share with you one aside that I think you'll be interested in, a new development that has occurred since I was here last in August. Of course, we've had the start of the IU fall semester, which is always a big time for us, as roughly 70% of our ridership are college students. And we're off to a very good start. The first four weeks of the fall semester, our ridership is up about 10% over the same time last year. So that's a very encouraging development, and we're hopeful and optimistic that that trend will continue through the rest of this year. And it's been a few years since we've seen any kind of encouraging news like that with regard to ridership. So with that, I'm glad to entertain any comments or questions that you may have about our proposed 2020 budget.
Thank you, Mr. May. And before we seek comments up here, I need to make note that the public comment portion of the deliberation on this item will constitute the statutorily required public hearing on the transit budget for 2020. Now, council comments. Councilmember Rallo.
I have a question.
Question.
And this is a question that comes up now and then, and it's anticipating, you know, so we've talked about climate, we've talked about, we've talked about garages in the past and so forth, and a strategy for really attending to these sorts of things is to expand bus service, and thinking of ways in which we can do it, and accessibility as well. And the question comes that, why don't we just offer free, you know, no fair ridership? And it sounds like a good thing, but it turns out not to be feasible. And could you explain why that's the case?
Well, I think it is feasible. It takes a commitment of revenue from another source that we haven't identified. We take in roughly $1.6 million in fare revenue from the general public, as well as IU. And if that revenue was to disappear from our budget, so we've got a roughly $13 million budget, and $1.6 million of that would no longer be available to us, and we would have to come up with a way to replace that somehow. If there's.
But, I'm sorry, maybe I should rephrase it, maybe I'm misunderstanding. So do we jeopardize, I mean, besides the fare itself, do we jeopardize any, any other revenue streams?
I don't think it jeopardizes any other revenue streams, but there are some other issues, and one that I think is important to point out, if we go to a free fare on fixed route service, we would have to also do a free fare on BT access service by federal law.
That's right, that's what I was referring to.
By federal law, your BT access fare can only be twice your fixed route fare, so two times zero is zero. And no doubt, with a free BT access fare, BT access, as you know, is a curb-to-curb, door-to-door type service for people with disabilities. And they have a $2 fare per one-way trip right now, and if that fare became free, no doubt it would encourage a lot more ridership, which would bring a lot more cost, operating costs that would go with it. So we would have to find a source of additional operating money to pay for that additional service.
So it's kind of hard to ballpark how much it would cost.
It's difficult to know. You know, I would, I could just take a stab in the dark at it. You're probably looking at up somewhere in the range of a 20% to 25% increase in additional service on BT access, roughly. Just a guess.
Okay. Well, then, so it is feasible, maybe? Okay.
If we can identify a source.
Thank you.
Councilmember Bowden.
Yeah, could we get a quick public statement on the amount being contributed by IU, and how that's changing at all?
Yes, so, and just as background to your question, for the three previous years that I've been here talking to you about the three previous year budgets, we had a no increase from IU from all three of those years. We are, we do have a 2% increase from IU for the 2019-2020 school year, which has started. And so that's encouraging news. In addition, the university is funding some additional service on the Route 6 route, whereby they have moved students out of residence halls to several private apartment complexes. And they want it to be sure that those additional students would have ample opportunity to use transit. So we've added, we've beefed up the frequency on that route, we've added a couple of buses on that route. And the early indications are that it has paid off greatly, as we've seen a very significant increase on that route. So it tells us that those students are probably using that service.
And I assume that that's a one-year only until the dorms reopen?
It is. It will go through May of next year, through the spring semester of next year, and then they anticipate moving those students back into the residence halls. These are the residence halls that had the mold issue.
And as a tangential note, have they also increased the student transportation fee? Is there more service on IU bus routes that may take pressure off of ours?
Yeah, I don't know if they've increased the student transportation fee. I don't know the answer to that, but I can probably find out. I don't believe the university has substantially increased any of their service, other than to put out a bus or two to deal with overloads, as sometimes happens, especially at the start of the fall semester.
Thank you.
Councilmember Sterbaum.
So here's a thought experiment. The state government has changed to be very pro-transit. The federal government has changed to be very pro-transit. What level would you have to multiply your current funding by to be at a level that people certainly all want to take advantage of the transit and would really seriously think about not driving?
I think I can venture an estimate on that. Probably an increase in funding, somewhere in the order of 50% to 60%, I think, would go a long ways in making public transportation more of a full service than what we have now. For example, Sunday service, which we have very little of right now, could, could be done if we had such an infusion of revenue sources from federal or state. Frequency improvements, you know, we have a number of routes that run 60-minute frequencies right now that could be beefed up to a 30-minute or better frequency. And then potentially, there's geographic areas that are unserved right now, or very poorly served, that could be better served to attract more riders. So those are just a few examples. There's other things that we could do from a capital perspective, more and better technology, more alternatively-fueled vehicles, all kinds of capital-type projects, more shelters at bus stops, things that, amenities that would encourage people to use public transportation.
Right. Just as long as it was a thought experiment, you might still get three or four times the funding, is my suggestion.
But that would be, that would be a dream come true.
Thank you.
Councilmember Pete Malmssmith.
Yes, I noticed that the estimated assessed value is higher in the Bloomington Transit budget than in the Civil City budget. Do you know why that would be?
Are you talking about on our budget forms?
Yeah.
I don't know the answer to that question. I would, I would have to ask my controller, and I can get back to you and let you know.
Mr. Underwood, do you know the answer?
Yes, we both have the, we're given an estimate by the state. They encourage us to use a number smaller than that. They've used a higher number than we have, so we went more conservative.
But it is the same geographic area, right?
At the end of the day, they'll threw it all up, and we'll have, both have the same AV.
Okay, so the city purposely underestimates the AV, or goes below the estimate?
We all do, but we went a higher amount than they did.
Wait, no, the city's is less than.
Right. We use a smaller AV number than they chose to use. But the state gives you an estimate, and your budget agency, or the DGF representative always tells you, "Don't use that higher number, use a number that's smaller than that." I tend to go more conservative in a much smaller number. It just allows for a safeguard. But at the end of the day, it comes back, it gets screwed up at the end.
Well, Mr. May, maybe next week you can let us know what the rationale is for the estimate that you use.
I'll find out and let you know.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, any further comments? I don't know, we're ready to go home, but I do have one final comment. This is more of an athletic analogy. Many times when you go from high school to college, or college to pro, the first thing that they'll say is, "Everything moves so fast. It moves so fast." I can agree with that, because that's like going from a board and commission to coming to the city council and legislating on your first couple of meetings is a budget of 2017. Now, what has slowed this process down for me, it has been the questions, the comments, some of the in-depth conversations that I've gotten from my esteemed colleagues, and I do appreciate that. I think we all appreciate discussing with each other. So I just want to say thank you all to that. And with that, are we ready?
Going to public comment?
I'm, thank you very much. We're ready to go home, I do. Okay. Do we have any, in the public, public comment? Seeing none, we'll return back to the council for comment.
Move to pass.
I got one thing to say.
Second.
I got one thing to say.
Councilmember Bowden.
Thank you. Look, the question that Councilmember Sterbaum asked was a good one. You know, how will we do if we had more money for public transit? I would again humbly submit the idea that although the transit budget is separate from the rest of the city for bureaucratic purposes, there is a funding source we have not tapped, and that is parking. That parking should be funding transit. It's going to take time to figure out how much it can do, but if we were planning our parking system appropriately and not subsidizing car drivers, and subsidizing the bus instead, we would have, I don't know, we'd have as much as Councilmember Sterbaum, or Mr. May said, you know, like two or three times as much would like, but it is within our grasp. It is. And we need to not think about them separately. That's certainly my goal. Hopefully, by next year, we can start thinking, because we have gotten parking under control. But I want everyone to think of parking as a substantial potential local funder for transit. Thank you.
Councilmember Pete Malmssmith.
Sorry, I just wanted to get in there before somebody said do-pass. Speaking of other possible funding sources for transit, I think we need to take a good look at possible local option income tax for economic development. That's the category of local option income tax that we do not yet have, but are allowed to have here in Monroe County. And I think that would be an excellent source to expand our transit services, have the buses run more frequently, so that they are more practical for people to use throughout the city. So let's keep an eye on that for the coming years as well. Thank you.
Councilmember Rallo.
Well, my two cents, given those two topics, I prefer the lid. I think that's the way to go. I would be, think that we would be fortunate if we had parking that would pay for itself. I mean, pay for the garages, let alone fund a bus service. So I think probably the lid is the best feasible option for us for expanding bus service.
Recommend you pass.
Second.
All right. Before we take the final vote, I want to remind my colleagues, we have a form for resolution 19-14 to sign before you go home, starting on my left.
Yes.
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 And that concludes our 8-0, that concludes our business for this evening. Do I need a motion to adjourn, or do we walk out? We're adjourned. We're adjourned.